10-4. Excellent. Well, today is October 12th, 2021. This is our City Council Work Session, calling to order. Just so the public is aware, the City Council may vote to go into executive session for legal advice and discussion regarding any of the agenda items. Shimoni, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today?
It would be my honor. Please stand.
(inaudible)
Thank you. And the mission of the City Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deasy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Solis.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet. Shimoni, excuse me?
I'm here.
And Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
He's Sweet, too. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item 4, Public Participation. Anissa Donen, do you want to come up, please?
Hello again, everybody. Mayor, Council. I'm here representing myself, our community. Once more, we understand that there are a number of things regarding the museum flood that are being addressed, largely things on the northern half of the watershed as well as the southern half. But it's come to the community's attention that much of the middle, center, which is really horribly affected, particularly Linda Vista and Grandview, currently has no funding allocated to it nor any plans. So we come to you again to ask for, you know, continued analyzing, funding, whatever needs to happen in order for the community that lives at Grandview and Linda Vista to be able to live safely in their community, in their homes, or, you know, give us options for whatever's going to happen. Right now, we are stuck in a limbo where we cannot sell, we cannot live safely in our homes, we cannot access our homes safely. And like I said, there's plans for Coconino Estates, there's plan for Upper Paradise, there's plans for the Dorafta Inlet, there's plans for Killup, but there is nothing on the books for Grandview and Linda Vista. So we just are asking that that continue to be closely considered and understand the danger and the position that the community is in who live on those streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Anissa. Thank you for your continued vigilance and making sure this remains at the top of our list for addressing. Do we have any elect, or virtual participants for public participation? Okay, I think that might be for the ARPA funds. Oh, okay. I will wait one moment here. Yeah, if you'd like to, if this is for the general public participation, you're welcome to come up and we can give you the, you can hand the card over thereafter. If it's for the American Rescue Plan dollars, we can hold on to that for later. Is general, okay. Sounds good. Yep, come on, come on up to the podium here and, yeah, mic's all good to go for you.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name's Kenny Glover. I'm a homeless disabled man with complex PTSD who has been a resident Flagstaff for about three years now. If I seem anxious, just know I've come a long, long way. I would have easily bolted by now. I'm full of hope for the future despite my pain and situation. That's why I'm here. Because I suck at speaking in front of people, this isn't easy. I was abused as a child, I ran away as a teenager, imprisoned as an adult, and I'm a survivor by nature. I've been cleaning out of trouble, off drugs, for 17 years. However, sobriety doesn't guarantee success. It doesn't guarantee anything except for a worthwhile struggle. I found overcoming our struggles is the most important thing we can ever do as individuals. Helping others to overcome their struggles is a sacred duty and a privilege for people like me, who have been there and know the way out. I've owned a business and I've lost one. I've volunteered with wounded warriors and I've been a mentor to young men behind bars. As a minister, a calling that has also been sidetracked for the time being. My heart and soul have been so completely transformed over the years that the boy I spoke of says it's about time to speak up and speak out about what I see as the real problems affecting our community, our society, and ourselves. I'll give my two cents' worth. It all starts with trash. I have ideas how to, how to put homeless folks to work, how to build them up and mentor them towards independence. Then we all win. Everyone. I had a dream about how to bring business owners, community leaders, the affluent, the middle class, the indigenous groups, with the homeless, the lost, the struggling, and all the community together for a worthwhile and common purpose, a cleaner and safer community. Not everyone out here is hopeless dope fiend. Many are struggling victims of hurricanes, floods, fires, and worse. Spousal beefs, drugs, alcohol, abandonment. In my mind, even the most addicted have something of a measurable value to offer. It just needs to be gently nurtured out of them to help them up and out of their self-imposed prisons. It happened to me, it could happen to anyone. At the end of the day, it's all about overcoming evil with good, and that takes an entire village. I have ideas about how to financially address the sit, the issues of homelessness, homelessness, that will benefit everyone and serve the environment and profit the community, not tax it. All I need is some of your time to go over the ideas. I've been conversing with Adam.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, the, the public participation's only three minutes, but I would really love to hear more. Anyone in the crowd who would like to email council and maybe even set up a meeting, council@flagstaffaz.gov. I would love to her, love to learn more when we have the means to do so outside of a, the public legal process that we can't really have a back and forth here.
Okay.
So, thank you, sir. What was your name?
My name's Kenny.
Kenny, a pleasure. If you would like to give your card to Ms. Fobar right there so we have it documented.
Okay.
And maybe council, or staff could just write down council@flagstaffaz.gov so we can follow up with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, do we have any virtual public participants?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Okay, well, we're down to Agenda Item Number 5, which is the review, review of draft agenda for the October 19th, 2021 City Council Meeting. Councilmembers, do we have any questions, concerns about the agenda for next Tuesday? All right, well, then we will move right along here. We have a couple proclamations, one I'll read up here, and then another we have an individual to receive regarding domestic violence awareness month. But the first is our Housing America Month. And as it pertains to Flagstaff, with recent studies, nearly half, 47% of Flagstaff residents are low income, earning no more than $55,350 annually. In Flagstaff's current housing market, 65% of households that fall within are below the low to moderate income level. Currently, 27% of homeowners and 57% of renters are housing cost burdened, meaning that 22,073 Flagstaff community members are living with a housing cost burden. In 2020, the City of Flagstaff provided funding to prevent eviction for 30 low to moderate income households and supported 21 low to moderate income home buyers with down payment and closing cost assistance funds. Today's proclamation is regarding Housing America Month. As for the last 80 years, it has been the policy of the nation to promote the general welfare of the nation by employing its funds and credit to assist the states in their political subdivisions to remedy the unsafe and unsanitary housing conditions and the acute shortage of decent, safe, and sanitary dwellings for lower income families under the U.S. Housing Act. According to the State of the Nation's Housing Report, nearly 41 million households now pay more than half of their income for housing, with more than four out of five with incomes below $15,000 paying more than 30% for housing. According to current estimates, on any given night, there are nearly 650,000 homeless nationwide and up to 3.5 million persons who experience homelessness at some point throughout the year. According to the National Low Income Household Housing Coalition's 2016 Out-of-Reach Report, in no state can a full-time minimum wage earner afford either a one- or two-bedroom rental unit at fair-market rent. According to the National Housing Conference, healthcare workers and many other working professionals are priced out of homeownership in the majority of U.S. metropolitan areas nationwide. And according to the Housing Assistance Council, 1.5 million, or 5.8% of rural homes were considered substandard in 2009. Public housing is home to more than 2.3 million people, 37% of whom are children, and faces an estimated more than $26 billion backlog in capital repairs. The National Association of Housing and Redevelopment officials raises public awareness of the importance of affordable housing and community development programs and resources. The aforementioned groups have declared October Housing America Month, part of a year-long nation, national campaign to inform the public and decision-makers of the critical need to address the nation's housing and community development concerns. The City of Flagstaff, which has, over a period of many years, endeavored to address affordable housing and community development needs, and has been successful in doing so using a combination of local, state, and federal resources, hereby endorses the Housing America Campaign, its goals, objectives, and purposes. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Housing America Month. Thank you. Onto the next proclamation, which is our Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And if Heather Marcy would like to come up for this, she's in the crowd. She's here. Great. See a few words afterward. I'm sorry.
All the others.
We have, we have some serious dad joke issues on council. We're just discussing it.
No, I know. I thought it'd be funny if you just said it was up here.
All right. Domestic violence is a pattern of behavior of violence and intimidation for the purpose of gaining power and control over an intimate partner. One in three women and one in four men have experienced sexual assault, physical assault, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. And domestic violence within a family increases the risk of other violence in the home, including child abuse. Over 84% of Native women experience violence during their lifetimes, and the Flagstaff Police Department recorded 1,991 calls for service for domestic violence in 2020. Every 44 minutes in Arizona, one or more children witness domestic violence, which is a significant negative factor in a child's development. Survivors of domestic violence exhibit amazing courage, strength, and determination in the aftermath of such violence and deserve Flagstaff support. The City of Flagstaff encourages all community members to work to support the efforts of organizations that provide education, outreach, and support to victims and survivors of domestic Now therefore, I, Paul Deasy, Mayor of the City of Flagstaff, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call upon the citizens of Flagstaff to join law enforcement, victim advocacy groups, and the other local organizations to make our community a safe and supportive place for all of our families. To further acknowledge and support Domestic Violence Month, the city will raise the Domestic Violence Awareness flag in front of City Hall for the month of October 2021. I'd like to present this to Heather. If you'd like, and you're welcome to say a few words, or anyone else, if you'd like.
Oh, thank you. Well, thank you to the council. We appreciate your support over the past years in proclaiming October Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It's important that all victims and survivors have a voice at tables where decisions are made about the services that impact their lives. We have Victim Witness Services, Flagstaff Police Department, Northland Family Help Center, NACASA, and Sharon Manor here today. But that doesn't include Flagstaff Medical Center, the Sheriff's Office, City Prosecutor's Office, county attorneys, that are all involved in efforts to support survivors through their journey. October 21st is Wear Purple Day. We encourage you all to wear that. It's part of an awareness event. And Brooke, do you want to share information on the Clothesline Project at North Country?
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll get you more information on that. But we do have an art installation that supports survivors and victims of abuse, and where they can write some messages of where they've been, where they're at now, their inspirational, as well as some of their stories, and we hang those every year. So there are decades of survivors that have had the opportunity to create these shirts, and they will be showcased at North Country Healthcare, whether the 21st or the 22nd, and we will send you that information.
Did anybody else want to say anything?
No.
Thank you. Well, we want to get a quick picture here for.
Yeah.
There's no way of getting off of us.
Yeah.
We're all perfect.
Yeah.
May need a piramid.
Awesome. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, great. Sorry, I just pulled it up. It's the 22nd from 9 to 4 at North Country. Thank you, Erin.
All right, that brings us down to Agenda Item Number 8. This is the Flagstaff Resident Survey Results.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yep.
Great. So, good afternoon. Sarah Langley, Public Affairs Director for the city. I'm joined tonight by Erin Caldwell, who is the Director for Research for Polco's National Research Center, and that is the organization that we commissioned to conduct the Flagstaff Resident Survey. So Erin is going to present the council with some background information on the resident survey, and then she'll give us a very high-level overview of the findings. I also wanted to note that the full version of the survey report is in your agenda packet, and that provides quite a lot of detail on the responses to each of the, the survey questions that we asked. So with that, I will pass it over to Erin. Thank you.
Hello. Can you hear me okay? I'm Erin Caldwell from National Research Center.
We're good.
Very good. And so, Mayor and Council, I am happy to be here this evening to present the results, well, a summary of the results from your Flagstaff Resident Survey. And before I begin, on behalf of myself and my NRC coworkers, I wanted to thank Jessica Drum, who was the previous primary contact, and now Sarah Langley, who is our current contact for us during the survey development and implementation process. They were both a pleasure to work with and provide a thoughtful feedback throughout the project. And then I'd also like to acknowledge my colleague Jade Rocha, who was not able to be here this evening, who was the project manager on our side for your survey, and who actually really did the work for your survey project. The Flagstaff Resident Survey was a statistically valid survey, which means that we use survey research best practices to conduct the survey so that the results are representative of the entire community. These results provide you the opportunity to see how residents view the quality of life in Flagstaff, to obtain their evaluations of government performance and city services, and to learn their opinions about the issues facing the community. This was the 10th iteration of a survey conducted in Flagstaff and was the second conducted by mail. The last survey was conducted in 2013. For the 2021 administration, we randomly selected 2,000 households in the community to receive the survey. This is one of those survey research best practices I mentioned. And you remember, may remember an example from a math or statistics class where if you randomly select marbles from a larger bowl of red and blue marbles, your sample should have a similar proportion of red and blue marble. So that's kind of the foundation of this statistically valid survey. So each of these 2,000 households received three mailings. The first was a pre-notification postcard alerting them that a survey would be coming in the mail. It also gave them a link where they could do the survey online if they desired. And then that was followed by two mailings of the survey, an initial and then a reminder. These multiple contacts with each of the selected households are another survey research best practice and really helped to increase the response rate. Within the survey packets, residents received a cover letter with instructions encouraging their participation, and then giving them that choice to fill out the survey that we provided, the hard copy with a postage-paid return envelope, or to, again, go online to do the survey. The mailing materials contain instructions in both English and Spanish, and those who prefer to complete the survey in Spanish could do so online. We received 434 returned surveys, a response rate of 23%. This is a good response rate. We typically see response rates between about 20 and 30% for surveys of this type. And with those 434 completed surveys, the margin of error, a term you hear a lot around election polling, this is a measure of the precision of the rolls, a measure of the precision of the results. And for your survey with 434 completed surveys, that margin of error was plus or minus five percentage points. And then when you look at differences between the 2021 survey and the 2013 survey, that most recent one, differences that are 7% or greater can be considered like a statistically significant change. And then I'm going to skip down here to the sort of last box on the slide for a moment. We compared the results from your survey to two sets of benchmarks. We have a national database of over 500 community survey results. And so we have that national benchmark, and then a subset of these communities were selected as peer communities. And the method that was used to select those peer communities was, you know, based on similarities to Flagstaff, on population size, WAC score, percent of the population age 20 to 24, the percent of the population that was not white, and the median household income. And now I'm going to kind of go back to that green box there, that another survey research best practice is to weight the survey responses to reflect the demographic profile of the community. So when we weight the survey data, we are making a, a statistical adjustment to account for the fact that some segments of the population are more likely to respond than others. So we begin by looking at the demographic profile of adults in the community from census data. And that's shown here for a few characteristics with the green bars. Then we compare that to the demographic profile of the survey respondents, and that's shown in these sort of pinky purply bars. So we find, I've been across the board in every community, younger residents and residents who rent their home are less likely to respond to surveys than older people and those who own their home. And this was true in Flagstaff. So what we do is we statistically rebalance or weight the results. This theory here is that those younger respondents we did hear from, they're more like the younger respondents we didn't hear from than they are like the older respondents who did respond. So when we apply these weights, what we're doing is we're giving more weight to responses from younger people and then, you know, less weight to those from older people. And again, this is just one of those survey research best practices. This is sort of an extreme example of kind of how the math of this works. So let's say that the population is 50% female and male, but we hear from 70% female and 30% male. So the weight we would need to bring that back into balance would be, you know, giving less weight to females, like a weight of .7, and more weight to weight, to males, like 1.6. And then let's further say that the unweighted rating of parks, for example, was 80% positive for females, but only 40% positive for males. If we didn't weigh, we would say that the positive rating was 68% overall. But that's fairly positive because we're weighted too high to females. So if we bring those back into proportion, we would say that really overall, the rating in the community would be like a 60% positive rating. So that's, that's kind of a lot of math, but I wanted to explain this because it's one of those important survey research best practices and not always well-understood. And so now I'm going to move into a summary of the survey results, and I do want to reassure you, it's just a summary. I'm not going to recite every survey statistic, but I'm going to share some things that we, at least at Polco's National Research Center, found notable. So our first key finding is that Flagstaff residents appreciate the quality of life in this community. Over three-quarters of respondents rated their overall quality of life in Flagstaff as excellent, or good, and 80, I said three-quarters. One quarter of respondents rated it, or one-third, as excellent, and 82% said that it was either excellent or good. And then we had three-quarters of residents who said that they were very or somewhat likely to remain in Flagstaff in the next five years. This rating was similar to the national and the peer communities benchmarks and to the rating given in 2013. And I'm going to go back and say the evaluation of quality of life was also similar to those benchmark comparisons, but we did see an increase in that from, compared to 2013. About nine in 10 respondents rated Flagstaff as a place to live and as a place to visit as excellent or good. About eight in 10 considered their neighborhood an excellent or good place to live. About eight in 10 felt that Flagstaff was an excellent or good place to raise children. And all of these items were rated similarly to those national and peer community benchmarks, except for Flagstaff as a place to visit, which was given ratings that were higher than the national and the peer community comparisons. And then about five in 10 residents considered Flagstaff an excellent or good place to retire, similar to our benchmark comparisons. And about half considered Flagstaff as an excellent or good place to work. And this was similar to the national comparison, but lower than the peer communities benchmark. Survey participants rated a variety of community characteristics. At least eight in 10 respondents gave positive ratings to the quality of the overall natural environment in the city and to the health and wellness opportunities. About seven in 10 gave favorable marks to Flagstaff's protected open space, the overall opportunities for education and enrichment, and the preservation of natural areas. Ratings increased from 2013 to 2021 for health and wellness opportunities, but decreased for overall opportunities for education enrichment. And then all the ratings that are shown on this slide were similar to the benchmark Another of our key findings was that affordability and availability of housing remain barriers to home ownership and residents' likelihood of continuing to stay in the community. And this was somewhat addressed in your, the proclamation you just did earlier. When we asked how likely or unlikely residents would be to leave the community because housing costs were too high, in 2021, about six in 10 respondents said that they were very or somewhat likely to leave. And this was an increase from 51% who answered this way when the question was asked in 2013. Survey participants who rented their home but wanted to own their own home, so it was kind of a select subgroup, were asked what was preventing them from reaching this homeownership goal. The main obstacle was the availability of homes for sale in their price range, with about two-thirds saying that was the barrier. Roughly two in 10 reported that they didn't know how to get started, or they indicated that they lacked a down payment that would be necessary to purchase a home, or they were unable to qualify for a loan. The survey included a question to which respondents could provide an answer in their own words, so they could write in a response instead of choosing from a closed set of responses. And one of these questions was what one thing the city could do to most improve their quality of life in Flagstaff. And when we classified the responses given, we found that over two in 10 made a comment related to housing affordability, and this was the second most frequently mentioned category of responses. Another question asked what they thought the top three priorities should be for the City of Flagstaff when spending public money. And about one quarter of respondents remarked on the housing affordability, and that was the third most frequent category. So it just shows that, you know, housing affordability is fairly top of mind for residents in Flagstaff. Our third survey highlight is that mobility and transportation options were viewed positively by residents with high rates of use of the bus systems and the trail systems. Flagstaff residents were asked to rate a number of transportation-related characteristics in the city. About seven in About seven in 10 gave excellent or good ratings to the overall ease of getting around. About six in 10 gave positive scores to ease of travel by bus, ease of travel by car, by bicycle, and by walking. And the rating of ease of travel by bus was higher than both the national and peer community benchmark comparisons, while those other ratings were similar to those comparisons. When asked how well the current transportation system meets their needs, 83% of respondents said the transportation systems meets their needs very or somewhat well. And this was similar to the ratings that were given in 2013. When, again, when asked to write in their own words the one thing the city could do to improve their quality of life the most, two in 10 residents identified items related to improving mobility, transportation, traffic, and roads. And this was the category with the highest proportion of responses. So we drilled down just a little bit more into that since we understood that you might want to know more about like what kinds of things were people saying. So of the responses within this category, 24% of the comments were related to traffic, 21% to street repair, 13% to bike and pedestrian improvements, and 12% to public transportation, and then the others to other things. So just to give you a flavor of, you know, what people were thinking about when we, or the kinds of things they were saying that we categorized into that. And then when, again, asked what they thought the top three priorities should be, 57% of respondents said something related to mobility, transportation, traffic, or roads. And this was that most frequently mentioned priority. 2021 survey participants were asked about their use of the Flagstaff urban trail system. One third of residents reported using the urban trail system more than 26 times in the past 12 months, and only about 15% had not used it at all. Survey respondents were also asked specifically about the use of the system for the commute to work. And about 25% reported that they or a household member had used the system to commute to work at least once in the past year. We asked a question about what level of priority various modes of transportation should be given in planning for transportation. Survey respondents were most likely to rate automobile transportation as the highest priority, closely followed by bicycle and pedestrian travel, and public transit wasn't far behind. Air travel was considered a highest priority by 10% respondents and a high or highest by about a third of respondents. While street maintenance was the lowest rated city service, 40%, 46% giving an excellent or good rating, that was a rating that was similar to the national and peer communities benchmarks and kinds of shows why this is so important to have these benchmark comparisons, because they don't always bear, streets don't always bear so favorably compared to things like a library or fire. But we did also want to mention that this is a rating that increased from 2013. Our next key finding was that, in fact, city services received favorable ratings from the community. About three quarters of respondents gave excellent or good ratings to the overall quality of city services. This was similar to our national and peer communities benchmark comparisons and similar to what was observed in 2013. Respondents were asked to rate the quality of 19 different city services. And at the top of the list are the ones shown here. Each of these received at least 83%, giving an excellent or good rating. And of course, like I mentioned, streets wouldn't be on this list, but those ratings were similar to the benchmark comparisons. And in fact, of the 14 services that could be compared to ratings given by residents in those national and peer community benchmarks, most received similar ratings. Recycling services received lower ratings than the benchmark comparisons. Traffic signals was given ratings similar to the nationwide average, but higher than the peer communities average. Compared to 2013, ratings for most services in 2021 remained stable. This slide shows where there were increases or decreases. So in green, these are ratings that increased, so that was traffic signals, snow removal operations, and street maintenance. While ratings decreased for recycling services, snow removal, pardon me, recycling services, sustainability and environmental programs, heritage preservation, and streetscapes. Our fifth key finding was that residents generally feel safe in Flagstaff, but concerns expressed about certain types of crime or discrimination. About eight in 10 survey respondents in 2021 rated the overall feeling of safety in Flagstaff as excellent or good. This rating was similar to what was observed in 2013 and also similar to the national and peer community benchmark comparisons. In 2021, survey participants were asked to select what they thought were the three biggest community issues from a list of 25 possible options. From this list, about three in 10 identified disorderly conduct, public intoxication or noise violations, or homelessness or transient-related problems as a top issue, while two in 10 noted traffic issues, driving under the influence, drug abuse, or domestic violence as one of the top three issues to address. And I'll just note again that domestic violence is something that you addressed today in your proclamation. Respondents were asked how often, if at all, they had personally experienced a variety of different types of discrimination in the past 12 months. They were most likely to report having experienced discrimination due to their political affiliation. About one quarter had experienced this some or most of the time. Roughly one in 10 respondents reported feeling discrimination at least some of the time due to their age, gender, or race. And I'll note that while these are small proportions overall, nevertheless, having any residents report experiencing discrimination is a concern. And that discrimination experienced because of political affiliation is likely a reflection of the larger political polarization the entire country has been experiencing. The final key finding is about ratings of government performance. These items tended to be less positive than other survey items, and we had, we observed a decline in some ratings. When asked to rate a number of aspects of government performance, between 35% and 42% of residents gave excellent or good ratings, so less than half. Compared to 2013, ratings decreased in 2021 for the overall direction that the city is taking, being, the city being honest, and the value of services for taxes paid. When we looked at comparisons to benchmarks, overall confidence in the city of Flagstaff government, the job the city does at welcoming citizens and involvement, and the value of services for taxes paid did receive ratings similar to the national and the peer community benchmarks, kind of showing that these are ratings that tend to get lower, tend to be viewed less positively, I should say, in the, in communities across the nation, not just in Flagstaff. However, the ratings of the overall direction that the city of Flagstaff government is taking and whether the city government is generally acting in the best interest of the community, being transparent or treating all residents fairly, were lower than the national benchmark comparisons. And where available, they were similar or lower than the peer community benchmarks. So I'll just say, this has been a pretty quick summary of the key findings from this presentation. And I will say, it's, you know, my hope and the hope of the organization I work for that you and city department staff will find the results useful. In our reports, we provide, you know, a great deal of information, including detailed responses for every survey question. And for many questions, breakdown of results by responding characteristics, including gender, age, household income, and area of residence. Of course, there's also comparisons of survey results over time. We hope that you and our city staff will dive deeper into the data relevant to their missions and start discussions about the findings and create action plans to continue to make Flagstaff a great place to live, work, and play. And that ends my slideshow, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Counsel, do we?
Counsel, do we have any questions?
Echo.
Echo.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have more of a comment. Thank you for this great presentation. That it's completely different to listen to you talk about the results versus reading through them myself. So thank you. This, this really gave me a picture. And it's very, very helpful to be able to compare it nationally and with communities like communities. Because otherwise, especially those trust in government. I mean, definitely, I think we have work to do, but it isn't as shocking.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shumani.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Aaron, for the presentation and your work on this. I also found the, the, the results insightful. I did wonder who didn't respond, and, and, you know, I know that those populations are hard to target, so I appreciate your, your comments about the weighted approach. I found it interesting that the transportation priorities broke out, as they did with cars and pedestrians and bikes and public transit, all rating really high, considering how our infrastructure has typically catered to vehicles. I thought that was interesting, and I think it's because Flagstaff is a very walkable and bikeable community. So I think the community just appreciates that, that quality of life that we have and that walkable ability that we live. I did find some of the comments regarding government trust and whatnot concerning, along with our, I, I, I forget what it was in regards to our police department, there was a decline of some sort shown. But we got work to do, folks, and, and this was definitely insightful, so, so thank you.
You, Councilmember. Councilmember Sauce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this very informative and insightful, statistically valid survey result. I'm just wondering if the pandemic, and we're still in the pandemic, has something to do with some of the results revealed in this survey.
Are you asking me that question?
Yes.
Okay, you know, one thing that it's, it was so long since your previous survey that it, it's hard to know exactly what to attribute some change to, right? It's been eight years since that. I will say what we have sort of found in general, kind of looking at our benchmark database, is that there hasn't been a lot of impact, except you'll see things like greater appreciation for things like outdoor parks and outdoor recreation, right? And that people seem to be showing a greater appreciation for, because during lockdown, those were some of the things that they could do and, and have a greater appreciation for. I would say with public trust, you know, the things related to some of the things you've all been mentioning, that's been a mixed bag too. Sometimes there's like, it seems like maybe we're seeing some greater trust or not much of an impact. But also, and maybe because of this increasing, you know, polarization, it, it, it's been somewhat of a mixed bag on the impact there, what we've observed nationally. Again, it's hard to say for sure in your community, because it's been quite a ways since your last survey implementation.
Thank you for, for that response, because it's just, occurs to me, because the survey, the server mailings were sent out at the beginning of March this year, which kind of brings us through a full year of, you know, experiencing isolation and sheltering in place. And everyone is affected, whether it's mobility, whether it's access to, to even recreational facilities offered by the city. And of course, some resulted to some changes in employment or even unemployment and underemployment and some. And, and the mental health related, associated to the isolation and depression through the pandemic. So I'm just wondering if the, if, if, I, I'm not sure if that's part of the questionnaires that were mailed out to if, if, yeah, just, just, just to capture a sense of, you know, had the survey been done, let's say, two years ago, it would have been different, right?
It, it, it likely would have been different, but, but we don't yet have a really good sense of what, what those impacts might have been, except for the few things I said we have noticed for sure about outdoor being more appreciated. And, you know, you didn't ask questions specific, and it's not necessarily a city, but maybe more of a county kind of thing, about mental health and those kinds of services, where, yeah, people may be feeling that impact.
Councilwoman Sweet.
Thank you. I, I did want to read or expand, saying thank you for the presentation and how thorough the, the information was. I know for me, it really reinforces where our priorities are and that we're headed in the right direction. And I agree, we have a lot of work to do, but this helped me just see that, yes, we are, we are heading and working on the, the checkoff items that you provided. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, my question is, are we going to continue doing these yearly now? Since they were being done yearly until 2013? I think it was what, 2001 through 2013, we did it yearly and we had an eight-year gap? Or is that for future budget discussions?
Mayor, just to jump in there, I think the reason that it wasn't done for the past eight years was indeed due to a lack of funding. So I believe that would be up to council direction and, and to the availability of funding in terms of, of future surveys being done.
And what was, what's the cost? Just so we know too.
I, I think I have an idea, but I wouldn't want to put out an inaccurate number. So I can email that to the council.
Okay, that would be great.
Afterwards, if that's appropriate.
Saying that in full, fully saying that this was a very valuable survey, that I see a lot of merit in it to be able to continue, and that there are difficulties in comparing, comparing 2013 versus 2021 and being able to keep a pulse on the public and their views of government is an important thing to not wait eight years to take a survey for. So that, that's where I was getting at with those questions. But I really appreciate all the hard work on us. And, yeah, look forward to hopefully seeing those numbers go up in future years. So, thank you much.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us down to agenda item number nine, the, the big one here. Discussion and direction on American Rescue Plan Act local recovery funding continued from the September 7, 2021 council meeting. Staff is, staff is seeking council discussion and direction for allocating the American Rescue Plan Act local recovery funding of $13,252,816, which the city of Flagstaff will receive. And just to note, as this is, it's 3:50 now, if this takes quite a while, we might break it in half, depending on how much public commentary and so forth we have on it, if it's going to be, you know, two and a half hour agenda item. So, just as a heads up.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm Rick Tatter, Management Services Director and City Treasurer. Today, the budget team is bringing back the discussion related to the American Rescue Plan Act funding for local recovery funds. I was requested to provide a little bit more information from the previous council discussion. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that to my attention. So I did email you a copy of, of our notes that we took from our discussion in September, on September 7. So you should have this spreadsheet in your email by now. And this is really the, the springboard to what our budget team had a discussion on, looking at the notes and other notes that we, we kind of jotted down during that conversation, and trying to build a, a new plan that addresses a lot of the things that you want to do. And I think we were very successful as a team, getting the funding into the places that we wanted to see increases and some slight adjustments. So this is in your, in your email for information, and we can go back to this later if you'd like. So, let me go to the presentation. So today, as we, we move forward with our discussion on the funding and the updated proposal or recommendation council or budget team has, and looking for your further direction, we'll continue to, to be sure after we get your direction that we're following all the guidelines to the American Rescue Plan Act. There are a lot of guidelines and requirements that we're going to have to go through. We will have to assure that we are following federal procurement and other requirements that we have to, have to do when we get federal grants. This is no different. There are guidelines and requirements that we have to go through to assure. There are guidelines and requirements that we have to go through to assure we're spending these federal funds appropriately and in the right places. For this perspective today, we kind of tried to group similar type of activities together in our programs and what we're presenting versus the list that we provided last time. And we'll go through those with you, then open it up for discussion with council. We'll do a little little bit of a tag team today with some members of budget team and housing. And so with that, we will kick off the discussion and City Manager Clifton.
Thank you, Rick. Just to preface the discussion, a few points to be made on the front end. The first one kind of goes without saying here that we, of course, need to arrive at balanced funding with the ARPA funds. But while we've had some very exploratory and and kind of informal discussions on this topic in the past, we're hoping tonight we could bring about a little bit more focus. We might respectfully ask, as you deliberate and and get through this very important matter, that when consensus does emerge, you articulate that to staff so we're, we can take very good notes as to where council where the consensus is on this. It is, you know, quite obvious that there's a lot of comments being shared and ideas being explored as we have these discussions. For those of us as staff will be listening closely and we're trying to take away topics or points of consensus when we think we hear it. We might stop and ask on occasion for that consensus to be tallied so that we have good direction. Thank you in advance. Another consideration to be had in this, and again, a statement of the obvious, is that the the ARPA funding that is in front of us tonight, that is in front of you tonight, represents one time funding by and large. And we think that's an important consideration to to be had as council discusses and deliberates upon the allocations of of these funds out into the community and internal into the organization. One time funding can really be helpful in many instances, and in some times it can also bring about some challenges in terms of financial sustainability. So we, at the budget team, of course, we we talk about these things and we would at least encourage council to to think about when we're talking about spending on programs, and there are so many important programs and and services being provided in the community, if these funds could be expended in a way that will will help ensure sustainability through time from a financial standpoint versus that of one time funding that could be setting up some programs for a lack of resources in the years ahead, always an important consideration. With that in mind, partnerships are always valued. Partnerships that could in last much longer than the current fiscal year in in this type of funding. And that's just one example, but but a very important one. Another consideration, and we've touched on this in the past, is it may be beneficial as we start having that focused allocation of resources. It may be beneficial to use other entities that can whereby we can pass through these monies to those entities and and they could be distributed accordingly to the recipients that are being envisioned by by council. I'm speaking specifically of entities like United Way of Northern Arizona and and organizations that we currently fund. And we fund them because they are so much more capable and proficient at seeing these funds distributed out into the community. There may be some things that we have to do internally, but we just recognize that there are others who are better at doing this than than we may be in some instances. And we also want to try to minimize our administrative overhead in in seeing these funds allocated. The other consideration, of course, is the very intent of the ARPA funding, which is to provide financial assistance in within our community in an effort to help entities, nonprofit organizations, service organizations, businesses, so forth, to rebound from the impact that they have endured throughout this pandemic. There's a lot of that at play here tonight. And even though we have emerged from our financial recession, COVID is still upon us and there still is impact and there has been impact and it's been profound, especially in our business and and service communities. So that is what this funding is is intended. And I think everything that council has been discussing and things we'll chat about tonight are very much in line with that. The last comment I'll share is some of this funding is suggested to be allocated for internal support, internal to the organization. We've had this discussion in the past. You know, ideas or 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 programs that are noteworthy would be, for example, this cybersecurity with our Water Services Division, a rather significant significant allocation of money being considered, something that will benefit us internally, benefit the community as a whole, as we're able to address that very, very important need. Other examples could be the for the more recently, the premium pay for public safety employees. We have been reporting to this council on an ongoing basis, the challenges that we're having organizationally with not just recruitment, but retention of our employees. And we're seeing that across the spectrum of the organization in some areas is quite concerning. Law enforcement being one specific division that I can speak to with great familiarity, that we our vacancy rates there are a little bit alarming in some instances. So whatever we can do to help retain the employees we have and to bolster their our recruitment processes, I don't think we're envisioning a lot of funds going into the recruitment efforts per se, but more in terms of trying to keep the employees that we do have, especially in the public safety arena. I think those are the comments I wanted to share, just to kind of set the stage for tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, I think this might be a good time to just directly ask you if you could go into the the administrative overhead funds a little bit more. Just I just help me understand where that $250,000 price tag is.
We'll give specifics when we get to that bullet.
Yeah, let's let's go through the 30,000 feet and then we'll dig deeper.
Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, Mayor and Council Shannon Anderson, Deputy City Manager. This particular slide is covering the dollars proposed for the alternate response program in as $2.4 million. This funding would be dedicated to provide care center services such as a safe place indoors, connection to services and treatment, cultural prayer and ceremonies, and providing basic care items such as restroom, washrooms and laundry services. The city is currently working with community members to define exactly what services are needed in Flagstaff and an RFP will be issued to seek service providers and delocation to provide these care center services to the Flagstaff community. The Community Ambassadors is a new program. As you may know, the Flagstaff Police Department has walking beat officers that are assigned to the downtown area. There was a request earlier this year for us to increase the number of officers dedicated to that area. Given staffing and the calls for service, we're unable to do that. And so Terry Medeska, who represents the DBA, and I looked to some alternatives that might be able to address the needs in our downtown area in a different manner. And that's where the Community Ambassador idea came from. This would assist us with those who might need mental health and substance use services, establishing relationships, building trust in order to connect them with those services in our community. I will turn it over to Sarah Dar to go over housing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the intro, Shannon. This afternoon, I am here to talk to you a little bit about the budget team's recommended $1.5 million for housing. And staff recommends that this funding be utilized via a competitive grant process mirroring the CDBG established process. We could identify priorities through both the Housing Commission and City Council that line up with ARPA eligible activities. This would do a couple of things. One, it's one time money, as Greg mentioned a few minutes ago. And so getting it allocated and getting it out into the community so that can it can be utilized as quickly as possible is an important element. This would also keep our admin low as we would only be administering contracts and the money could be utilized and targeted by targeted to, so it could be utilized by community agencies. We do have the established CDBG process. We could run one either at the same time as CDBG for ARPA funds or separately. Either way, we would love feedback on that if council decides to go in this direction when we come back to you for some priority setting. The other great benefit of running this funding through a competitive process is the ability to quantify the leverage. That's these dollars could be utilized to leverage other dollars in our community, either CDBG or private investment or other federal or or state investment. I know that you know there is no shortage shortage of needs in the housing arena that I think there's been a flurry of emails this afternoon, Fast and Furious, with ideas surrounding it. And we, as staff, would like to hold a process so that we could present to you with activities that have been vetted like we do with CDBG. And then the money can go where council and the Housing Commission have prioritized it to go within the community according to ARPA eligible activities. I think that's the my big points with this. I'm happy to answer questions when we get into it. At the end, I think our big points are the opportunity for leverage and the opportunity to get the money into the hands of those doing the most work in our community. Since we provide very few housing services directly ourselves, that utilization of community partnerships continues to be key, especially with the expenditure of one time money such as this. Thank you so much, and I will hand it back to, I'm guessing, Rick Tatter.
Correct. Thank you. Our next group of programs that the budget team is is recommending based on your conversations last month is our support of nonprofit agencies. Here you see a list of areas that we we look to maybe designate the funds for, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. $400,000 is for our congregate care setting services. These are the areas like shelters, nursing homes and those kind of things that may need the additional assistance to help prevent COVID and help them support their agencies in our community. Our arts and science grants or support is an area we're looking to contribute 150,000. This is another one of those areas we would probably look for a partner that we have in town to help designate and distribute these types of grants to these agencies that have been hit with impacts due to COVID. Then the number six is support of nonprofit food support. This could be in various ways, in various agencies that we'd like to allocate funding for, $350,000 to help with the the food services and supplies within our community. As we know, pandemic is still occurring and we want to still support those those areas. And then 150,000 for other nonprofit support. And this is other areas that the city already contributes, possibly through United Way or other nonprofits we support. Or we can look to expand that for other services in our community that need our support and can come to us and and ask for some help with funding there. So that's our list of nonprofit agencies. And next, we're going to go to small businesses that were impacted and Ms. Hanson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers Heidi Hansen, Economic Vitality Director, and a proud member of the budget team. When we're looking at the small business impact and the idea is to create some grant programs, the small business grant program and job training assistance, the 600,000 that we're suggesting would be a larger version to a mini grant program that we did this past pandemic, where we actually were able to take money and help support 24 of the businesses that applied through various funding levels to help them through the pandemic. We would like to do this on a much larger scale this time because we saw that the need was so great. And then we would like to separate this grant program, the small business grant program, with a tourism grant program. Reason being is tourism is the number one economic driver in our community, as you all know, serving over 5.3 million or 5.8 million visitors a year. They were hurt major by the pandemic and they're still struggling because they have no international travel and they have no way to fill their meeting spaces to the degree that they used to. So we would like to look at that, number nine, as a way that people that support the bed, board and beverage tax could apply for that and then not be competing with the smaller businesses on the other mini grant or the other grant program that we're suggesting for small businesses. This way, there isn't a competition and there's a definite division of of labor there. As for number 10, I would have to say that if you have deep questions on this, that I'd like to turn that over to Rebecca Sayers. But I do know that we want to actually offer local event support with permitting fees for our event planners that have been struggling, as you know, so so badly because of the pandemic. Again, if you have further questions on that, I'm sure Rebecca is available. Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Rick.
Thank you, Heidi. Our next group that we put together was education and vaccination outreach. You'll also notice on here there are some nonprofit agencies that would help us support in advancing these here, but we thought these were were closely tied to education and such. So we brought those into this group versus the lump of nonprofits in the previous slides. So here we're looking to allocate $250,000. This is to continue and increase our assistance with early learning opportunities in our community. We are looking for 350,000 to put toward construction of a facility that we can use for educational opportunities such as a STEMS program or STEAMS program that we can run or some type of related programs out of a facility that we we own and and we invest in. And then vaccination outreach. We talked about incentives last time. We decided, based on your comments in September, that maybe our best approach is to do more outreach, invest in our Discover Flagstaff team and get out there and really do some education and getting people to commit to getting vaccinations and help move those numbers in our community. So we're looking to fund 10,000 in that category from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The last group of services is for our city services. And these are kind of the internal services and programs that we'd like to deliver and have funding to for our organization. City Manager Clifton talked about support of rehiring staff. We have a large vacancy list. We're trying to get people to Team Flagstaff, and we're looking to use this funding, not necessarily for hiring staff, but how can we do better in outreach and getting people to understand Team Flagstaff is the best place to work? We want to drive people to our website and look to be part of our team in the long run. So how can we get out there, educate, explain what's the great parts of areas of of Flagstaff through a promotional way and get those people excited to work for Flagstaff? The next one is support of divisions with high vacancies. And this is an area where we're looking to things such as premium pay. Our hardest hit area is our police department and our dispatch areas. But we have other areas that are approaching high vacancy areas that we may want to look at using funding for this. This is an amount of 700,000. Previous, it was a million, so we did cut this back a little bit to fund other items for council. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to Shannon Anderson to talk about the statistics of the vacancies and so forth.
Thank you, Rick. So, Council, I wanted to share with you today an example of when this premium pay will be used. An example is the vacancy rate within our 911 Dispatch Communication Center. We currently have six positions that are vacant, 11 individuals who are in training. This means out of the 24 police emergency communication specialist positions, there are 17 full time equivalents who are not able to fill a scheduled shift, which means we've got a vacancy rate of about 70.8%. In this instance, the city would consider additional pay to try and In this instance, the city would consider additional pay to try and retain the remaining employees who are trained so that they could cover the scheduled shifts and in addition, train these new employees so that they can soon learn the, how to answer phones as well as radios so that they can retain, be retained and fill those shifts as well. Another example that we are currently keeping an eye on, but certainly hasn't risen to the level of premium pay yet is our police officers. We currently have fifteen vacancies with eight attending police academy and one in field training. This means out of the seventy-seven police officer positions dedicated to respond to calls for service, there's twenty-four full-time equivalents who are not able to fill a scheduled shift, which equates to about a thirty-one percent vacancy rate. So these are some examples in which the city would look to premium pay with the goal of retaining our trained personnel so that we can continue to have them remain as part of Team Flagstaff. And our community members can continue to receive the same level of service with the knowledge, skill and ability of those trained individuals.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. So item sixteen is, is administration for the American Rescue Plan Act Local Recovery. We have reduced this number a little bit more than the previous presentation down to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is an area that's for two years of funding for a position that we've elevated to really focus and make sure we're using these funds appropriately to the guidance of the ARPA guidance as well as the federal requirements, all the reporting that is going to come with this quarterly and statistics and all that, as well as developing these programs with the different parts of our organization to get the money out to our community. So this is two hundred and fifty thousand for those services. And when you look at that number, that's really about two percent of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. When you look at other administrative costs that agencies may charge, they may be up in the fifteen to twenty percent range. So I think we've kept this rather low just to assure most monies get out, but we do need that staffing and maybe some other tools for our organization to do this right and be reporting properly. So that's the administration portion that we are requesting. And then number seventeen, the last program is the one point five million for cybersecurity at our water services facilities. This would basically at least take care of one project, possibly out the Wildcat or another location to help enhance fiber in our security for our water systems. And so we're keeping that at a one point five million as we addressed previously. The revenue loss number is the remainder of the funds. We have reduced this number below four million, just under four million now. I, I think that's maybe about as much we'll get in revenue replacement through the current guidance or future guidance that we get from the treasury. And we'll keep a look on that once we get the final rules and future guidance through the next month or so. So those are all the categories that the budget team revised based on your conversations. I, I think you see the ups and downs that we've put in there and we've got funding, the big funding where you directed and, and asked us to look for. And just in summary, this is the breakdown of those different areas that we talked about in the previous slides. So here you can see housing assistance and alternate care is about four million of the allocation. Nonprofits, not all the nonprofits, just that group is about just over a million. Businesses, just under a million. Education vaccinations, six hundred and ten. City services, including the one point five for cybersecurity is, is two point five and then our revenue loss replacement due to a lot of lost revenues during this COVID period that we saw in, in many of our funds. And so that addresses how the budget team is bringing forward a recommendation for funding. And with that, we will open it up for public comment or council questions.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tatter. Let's, we'll do some questions now, but please council, let's stick to just questions and we will do discussion. We have about at least a dozen public participants I'd like to hear before we start discussing our, where we want to prioritize. But happy to take questions now with Mr. Tatter. Vice Mayor, you first.
Thank you. And thank you, Rick and staff for the presentation. I have two questions. How many employees are we talking about in terms of police officers and dispatch? And while you're getting that information, Shannon, Rick, the second question is for you. Is there the possibility of releasing some of, if we don't use a third agency like United Way, do we have to, to release RFPs? Is there any other way to get money to nonprofit organizations?
If, if it is under fifty thousand, we can do a, a direct solicitation to get three, at least three responses to the request for funding and utilizing that. If it's under fifteen thousand, we just got to get written, a verbal quotes for the services and we can move forward with procurement. But anything over fifty thousand, yeah, does have to go through a formal procurement unless we have an existing contract in place with somebody that's been approved by council that we can expand on as a service. So those are kind of the options that we have. But there's federal, the federal government is really strict about how we procure and get these monies out.
So in terms of the business grants, right, as I understand it, that would go to an entity who would then distribute those. So we're looking at the nonprofits in a similar fashion if we don't do the RFP process.
Yeah, it depends on what, you know, types of services and nonprofits we hit and whether we have an existing contract that can allocate to them through an agency. We could use those opportunities and just adjust the contract. And the contract will probably still have to come back for that level of increased dollar. It's, it's just part of the process.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And we got Ms. Anderson.
Oh, yes. Deputy City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Deggard, I just wanted to confirm, you wanted the numbers for the dispatch vacancies as well as police officers? Is that correct?
Well, what I'm looking for is how that seven hundred thousand would be divvied up.
Oh, gotcha. So we're currently using a portion of it for the premium pay for dispatch. That's really the only thing that we're utilizing right now. And that is to increase their rate of pay depending on if they're a trained employee or a non-trained employee. There's a different amount for each. And then also increasing the incentive an employee receives when they become fully trained on a radio. It allows us to be more versatile in the employees that we can schedule, which really helps us control personnel costs. So that's what we're currently doing in dispatch for our existing employees. And in addition to that, we are offering a higher rate of pay through performance staffing for employees who are fully trained but left our organization to incentivize them to come back and work for us on a part-time basis in order to help us fill those shifts since it is a twenty-four seven operation.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy.
Rick, on item number twelve, it says facilities construction for economic opportunities. Does that mean we're going to build a building or what does that mean?
One of, one of the thoughts is, is working on a facility, building a facility or such, similar to maybe what we talked about with the old fire station in Sunnyside, making sure we hit a community that could use the additional education and opportunities related to these types of education.
So that would be like Tinkertopia or something similar to that?
Something in, in that realm to help educate in, in that, that type of communicate, yep.
And then I had, my last question is for Sarah Dar. Sarah, could you give a couple of examples of how this housing, I mean, we definitely need housing assistance. Could you give a couple of examples of how we might use that money that we are calling housing assistance?
Absolutely. Depending on, once we flesh out the requirements surrounding ARPA, it would need to go towards housing activities, for example, down payment and closing cost assistance if any of our local partners are undertaking projects. For example, Housing Solutions just purchased the, excuse me, a hotel. I know there's another agency looking to do the same thing. We could help close the gap in funding needs for those and producing additional units, especially related to COVID since there's already some COVID money coming towards the purchase of those hotels. A number of things in those areas. Our idea for putting it out for a competitive grant process is so that we as staff are not picking what the community priorities are, but rather we're hearing from the community where they most need the money.
Thank you, Sarah. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you.
Ms. Dar, I have a question for Ms. Dar.
I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah. So does this one point five million covers a revolving fund for loans in terms of housing assistance for low-income families?
I am not intimately familiar with the ARPA requirements. However, setting up something like a revolving loan makes a lot of sense. Of course, we don't directly administer those programs ourselves at this point, but rather we contract with a partner in the community, in this case Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona, to run that program on our behalf.
Thank you, Ms. Dar.
So we would come to council and say, here, here are the rules for ARPA. Here's our recommendations for priorities. What are you interested in doing? And of course, we really like to revolve money because we don't get it all that often. So anything we can do to bring that money back around is helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Dar. Something to think about and ponder on. I have one last question, but has something to do with the small business support. Can you walk us through on how these funds will be administered, the small business grants and the tourism industries related grant?
Mayor, Councilmember Salas, I got part of your question, if you won't mind repeating the whole thing.
Yes. So thank, thank you for, for suggesting this, the small business grants and also separate from the support for tourism-related industries grants. So how are these business grants be administered?
So Mayor, Councilmember Salas, we, we can decide on that. Last time we went through the Downtown Business Alliance, Teri Medeska, she helped to put a panel of people together to get this, to get the grant program put together. She actually worked with Dave McIntyre, Community Investment Director. And they were able to get the application finished and then have people apply. And then they had a panel of a variety of people. I think Teri might even be in the chambers tonight if you want her to come up to the dais. And they were actually able to decide as this panel on giving the grants and how much funding each person would or business would receive. We could probably do something very similar. Please note, that does not mean that it's only downtown businesses that would receive funding. They actually had county, we had county participate and NAU participate in the funding and we actually did grants that were throughout the county as well. I think even all the way to Page when it came to county money. As far as the tourism related one, we could probably discuss this at greater length. A suggestion might be it comes before the Tourism Commission or maybe it comes before the Flagstaff Lodging Restaurant Tourism Association where Steve Finch is leading that as director. So there are some options that we have for a pass-through and for people to help us manage this. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hanson.
Thank you.
Councilmember Assam?
Thank you, Mayor. Lots of great questions have been asked already. And some of my questions piggyback on those. I'll just put a finer point on a couple of things going through this list here. If we could go back to Sarah Dar, I'm wondering if you're aware of Eric Wolverton's Habitat for Humanity Home Loan Fund request and if that would be an appropriate item to put in the parking lot for those funds?
Thank you for the question, Mayor and Councilmember. I, I was aware of it when I was forwarded the email this afternoon, so I haven't had much time with it. But they would be under the model that staff is suggesting. Habitat would be welcome to apply for use of those funds for then ranking, for consideration by the ranking committee and then for city council consideration as well. So I think that's part of the beauty of a competitive process to allocate these funds is that the full complement of community need could be presented to you for your consideration. And then you can choose for, you can choose the targeting.
Excellent. Thank you. More on that later. And then in terms of congregate care and shelters, we have a premier shelter agency here in town. Are, I mean, are we talking about going out with an RFP on these funds? This four hundred thousand or do we have someone in mind for that already? I, I'd just like to know generally where we're all at, even if you don't feel comfortable getting too specific about it. Just for the overall purposes of thinking through how to do some of this stuff.
We have not specifically identified one or the other as far as getting this out there, but you know, we'll, we'll partner, maybe we'll partner with the county to see how we can get the funding to the right place also when we're partnering with agencies and so forth. So no, we haven't specifically determined anyone specifically.
Okay, that's helpful to know just contextually for later. And then I did want to ask about number eight. Heidi, if you're available, small business support, I have here on my paper, those affected by the pandemic. And I, I would just like a little more assurance. How, how are we going to be filtering that? Everybody and their mother was affected by the pandemic. So I'm not sure that narrows it down much.
Well, Mayor, Councilmember Aslan, that's a great question. We, we basically use, we would have a form that they would have to fill out and it was just kind of the same system that we used last time for our mini grant program. We had thirty-nine applicants apply and twenty-four that we were able to give funding to. And the reason is because some of the people that applied couldn't show the, the need. They couldn't answer the questions that we needed them to answer. So there would be a vetting process just the same way it was in our mini grant program for this program as well. We would ask the right questions. We'd probably ask for the right documentation. And I'm not saying, actually not probably, we would be. So I just want you to feel rest assured that we'd make sure that people that were receiving funding were truly in need.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. We probably don't have those specifics yet.
Mr. Tatter, if you want to jump in on that one?
If you don't mind if I add, we'll be going through the guidelines as far as ARPA funds because they're going to ask specific measurements and, and things within that. So we'll make sure the applicants, the applications gather all that to assure they're meeting the, the impacts and so forth. So that's how we'll get that guidance also.
Okay, great. And that's nice to know that there might be some parameters that are put in place for us to start out with that we can work with. In terms of the number twelve, the, we had a question about this earlier. I just find this line item to be super vague and unhelpful to me. I'm not sure if there's something specific undergirding this. But it's just like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for facilities and advanced economic opportunities. If there, if you're able to get more specific with what you're referring to there, that would be very helpful for planning.
Yeah, references to the Joel Montavo facility, which is the old fire station that Mr. Tatter made reference to. That is in the Sunnyside neighborhood. That facility has, as we know, been vacant for several years. We had a, an audit done internally on the building to see if it was salvageable from an economic and sustainability standpoint. It is not. So the best practice being advanced, the best approach would be to build a new building on the same footprint, utilizing as much of the infrastructure in place as we can that taps possibly the foundation. we can, that taps possibly the foundation. I believe it's on a concrete slab foundation. And to then proceed in the competitive process to enter into a long-term leasehold arrangement with one and preferably two nonprofit service providers in the community who can help provide needed education, STEAM education, early childhood education, things of that sort, to that neighborhood, to the community as a whole, but the neighborhood largely would be a beneficiary of this project. Of all the programs we're talking about today, we only identified this one as an actual bricks and mortar investment, but we think it's a good investment. The origin of, and it goes back to my comments, Councilmember, at the beginning about one-time funding and what we can do with this to ensure sustainability of the programs over time, having a building facility that can be leased at, in a favorable, with favorable terms to service providers in the community could go a long way in that regard. The estimate on the building cost is, the best estimate we have now, coming from internal resources from our facilities team, as to what it might cost. That number's a little bit fluid, but we think it's a good number to start the discussion with. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for that. And of course, City Manager, I'm aware of those ongoing conversations and have been a part of them. Just the way this was, it, this felt a little vague, and I wasn't sure if we were specifically, you know, talking about that, or if those funds could suddenly drift to some other similar type of project elsewhere, but I appreciate the specificity there. Two more questions, Mayor, if I may. With the administration of the ARPA funds, I want to go back to that a little bit. Can you, can you break that down for me a little bit more? Is this, is this three or four FTE positions? Are we hiring new people in order to manage this, or is this going to be farmed out to our capable staff, as we have right now, and just budget allocations coming through this instead of other places? How does that work?
So, this item, we are fortunate to have a staff member that has stepped up into a grant specialist position for us, and they, their role will be to guide us through this American Rescue Plan Act funding. So, we took our resources from within and promoted somebody to that role, to manage this, to focus on it, and do all the reporting. And then we just backfill with a temporary position. That's not, the temporary position's not funded, just that one position that stepped up. Morgan Mulaney, you'll probably hear from her a lot as we move forward in this process and be educated on what we can use these for. So, that's the majority of what this fund is. And then there's, you know, maybe 20, 50,000 for some tools or software or things we made to get to help us manage also the program for the reporting requirements and that, those kind of things. So, we have that in that toolbox also, but primarily staffing that we brought up internally.
Okay, thank you for that. And then one more question, with revenue loss. You know, if these ARPA funds never came forward, if this conversation never existed, just walk me through a little bit what that would mean for, I mean, this is just lost, lost money to our budget, right? We wouldn't have other ways to recuperate it, or we'd try to do it slowly over time with future windfalls or whatever, but I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just wondering out loud here, if these ARPA funds were not available to backfill lost revenues, what would that mean for us as a city?
Yeah, good question. Back in April, at the budget retreat, we came to council and talked about the items we want to, we as a budget team wanted to support and fund through the budget process, but we didn't have the revenues for them to put in our budget. That was about $9 million. We know we're not going to get to that figure, so we've already budgeted for those, and that's going to have to be cut back in half. Things that existed in there, and I don't have the full list, were things like the Highway User Fund, lost a lot of money. So, they needed, they were in need for equipment replacement, fleet needs and so forth. So, we budgeted that to use these funds for. The General Fund had a lot of programs. We put money to climate action, money to electrify fleet, and several other items we listed in April that we wanted to fund during the budget process, but we brought to you at the April retreat saying, these are the items we want to consider in the budget. And they were adopted by council in June. So, those are the kind of things that we were looking for funding here. Had it not been there, those items would have been off the list and not funded, and we would have had a balanced budget, and we just weren't able to do more for our community with those other items that we were bringing forward. So, that's kind of a summary of what we were doing up with the funds.
All right. Well, thank you for sitting in the hot seat there for a little while, and for everybody weighing in, and thank you, Mayor, for the time. Of course, you know, some of these questions are mine, and some of these are just a part of the conversation I feel needs to be lifted up to bring the general public along, to peer into some more of the details of a lot of the great thinking that's going on behind the scenes. Just appreciate you being able to speak to some of those things publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimon?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the discussion so far, and staff for the presentation. This, again, is a blessing. Also seems like a curse at times, trying to figure out how to make this balance and make sure we're satisfying all the different needs. Quick question for our Deputy City Manager, Anderson. So, really quick question in regards to the alternate care facility or services. Would the services allow for things like investing in a mobile outreach provider of services?
Councilmember Shimon, are you referring to the Mobile Response Unit that, that we're going to be starting in the spring, or?
No, I'm thinking like additional services, like mobile showers, mobile resources like that.
It could, depending on what might be present in a facility. So, if a facility has shower facilities, a place for laundry, then we would not necessarily need a mobile unit for those types of services. But if there is a facility that would meet all other needs, we could look at a mobile unit to provide those. It just depends on where we actually find a location and what's included. If we're looking at something that's going to be more of a pilot program, we might not want to invest the dollars to remodel or do construction. So, mobile services would be very helpful in that instance. If we're looking for a permanent home, it would probably be beneficial for us to maybe use a mobile unit in the short term until we get those types of services built in.
Okay, great. And then, would we also be able to put aside just a small sliver of those funds to go towards like bus passes to help folks transport?
We certainly have talked about that as an alternate response team, depending on where the facility is located. If we believe it will be harder for individuals to get between this facility for care and places where they might be sheltering, we certainly want to consider transportation. It'll just depend on where the facility is located compared to those other needs.
Okay. And I'm also just thinking general transportation, not necessarily to and from this facility, but I just know that transportation is one of the biggest needs of our unsheltered and folks that don't own a vehicle. Do you think that we could also put aside a small portion of bus passes for that, or is that outside the scope?
It may be cheaper for us to purchase bus passes, and if that's the case, then they could use the bus pass to transport anywhere that they need. It will really depend on what we identified the transportation needs being associated with this care model, and the most cost-effective way to provide that transportation.
Excellent. My other question is on the number two bullet point, which is the community ambassador. So, is this, my understanding is that this is going to be in addition to the like downtown walking beat, and it's going to be somewhat like a mental health, behavioral health specialist, kind of walking around, similar to what the downtown walking beat does, engaging with individuals and trying to connect them to resources? Is that kind of the intention?
Yeah, you have it. Exactly correct.
Okay, and is this to hire one individual? Like, do we know any details on that?
So, this was an estimate on hiring one individual. Originally, we were talking about two, but in order to align with the recommendations we heard for council, this was reduced to one individual in hopes that we could partner with other agencies and actually hire the two community ambassadors. And these would actually not be employees of the City of Flagstaff. We would work with the Downtown Business Alliance to hire them to focus in that area, but not necessarily be on city staff.
Okay, that's great. I, not too long ago, did a walk-along with a member of our downtown walking beat, thank you, Chief, and it was very insightful and very eye-opening experience, and I think this would be a big benefit to that, to that effort, and a twist on that type of outreach and really focusing on how to best support this population. So, the only thing I'll say in closing on that topic is just if we can do it through a cultural lens, and ideally even hire folks who have more of a background, that they can connect with the individuals we're looking to serve, I think that'd be great. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have a couple of questions. First off, I had sent a question regarding the use of these funds, for example, for black mold and for other situations of properties in our community that are uninhabitable or close, or dangerous to be living in. And as we are looking at, you know, one and a half million dollars for housing in particular, can we utilize these ARPA funds for helping to revitalize some homes particularly that we've seen happen recently that could definitely use a little love to make sure that people can actually inhabit them?
So, I may ask Stacy Brookler, and I'd like to chime in on this also. I know when we're talking about the ARPA funds, it's correlated to the COVID and pandemic and those impacts in our community, and how we can help those who are impacted by the pandemic. I'm not sure how well we can tie from an existing condition home to a pandemic situation. And so, those are the guidelines. We have to make sure we fall within. So, that may be, maybe a little tougher, and I saw Sarah jump on there for a minute, if she'd like to chime in also.
You handled it. I'll be quiet. Thanks, Rick.
So, we can research a little bit more, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Wasn't there a category for clean air, clean water as well? Because, I mean, yes, we have the, it is related to COVID primarily, but they allowed for certain allowances such as lead, lead pipes for water supplies. And I'm wondering if there's any caveat in that with the guidelines that would allow us to utilize the funds for that purpose?
There is a category for infrastructure, and that is specifically for clean water, drinking water, sewer, and broadband. Those are the key categories. Yes, I believe things like lead and that kind of, lead pipes and that kind of stuff would be available for city infrastructure, replacement and so forth. I don't know that it can expand to a home and to a business to provide that type of support. It's more about city infrastructure when you're talking about these types of funds.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
If we could do just a little more homework, just to verify that, because I think that, you know, when we're talking 1.5 million for housing, it's a lot cheaper to retrofit a home that has a black mold problem than it is to build something from the ground up. So, maybe an efficient use of resources, A, and B, a lot of people could use it in the community. Again, I'm not sure if, how that fits with the guidelines. You all know better and better than I do, so, but definitely would like some confirmation on that.
Yeah, if you want to propose a dollar amount, we can see how we can shuffle things around to, and hold it for that type of stuff, but as of right now, I'm just not sure, and maybe others are researching it right now, so.
Okay, well, we can save that for the discussion aspect before public participation. The other question I had was regarding the community ambassadors. For 75 grand, are we getting matching funds for that purpose, or is this all on the shoulders of the city for?
There would need to be additional funds, Mayor. The 75,000 would not cover the two community ambassadors.
Okay, so this would be a situation where we'd have a partnership with, a partnership with funding as well, not necessarily all on us?
Correct.
Okay, that's good to know, because it is a little, this wasn't exactly what I was expecting when we last spoke about support of mental health and substance use services. I was expecting more like counseling services, not for the community ambassador program. So, I just wanted to, yeah, get clarification on that. Any other?
Certainly.
Any further questions, Council? Well, before we start a long list of public participation and discussion, it's been at this coming on two hours now, probably be good to just take a 10-minute breather before we, yeah, have to use our brains a little more thoroughly. I will note, though, thank you, Rick, for sending that document, that Excel file to all of us from the September discussion. I'm urging all of the members of council, please take a look at that. There are certain things that, you know, almost all the way, yes, we're very much what we're seeing now in line with what we were discussing, but there are a few things, for example, like the tourism dollars, that the majority of us stated that we would like to reduce that has remained the same. So, rather than having to rehash out a lot of the conversation, it might be a good baseline to understand where all of us are coming from as we consider reducing certain amounts to increase elsewhere or do other projects. So, please take a look at that, and otherwise, let's give 12 minutes. So, we'll be back here at 5:00 PM. All righty, folks. We're gonna start back up here in just a minute, if we can start to, yeah, wrap it up. Will the real city council please stand up? Or sit down. There we go. Yeah. You even beat Jim. Jeez. What's that? I don't know. Yeah, right? Yeah, I do. I'm bringing, I brought my jacket this time, man. Yeah. Get some fruit snacks. All right, I think we're good to restart here. Are we streaming now? Excellent. Well, with that, I'd like to start up with the public participation. I do believe we have about a dozen people in person, and then we will get to the online comments thereafter. Heather Marcy, come up?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council and staff. I'm Heather Marcy, Deputy Director of Northland Family Help Center. NFHC primarily serves victims of crime through emergency shelter and community-based services. Today, I emailed you NFHC's informational packet, including our proposed budget and information on anticipated funding cuts, and I'm happy to field any questions about that. The group of victim service providers here today are delivering critical care for our communities most vulnerable, including mental health and supportive services, medical services, and housing, serving thousands of people annually that primarily have experienced domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. We are experiencing a strain on services due to COVID-19 and greater client needs. Emergency funding locally was exhausted by summer of 2020. We're still operating during a global pandemic that spanned over a year and a half, and have been told by federal and state organizations that our local governments will be able to address the ongoing strain on our program, on our programs with ARPA funds. Additionally, the local providers before you are all members of and have spoken in depth with the Arizona Coalition 10 Sexual and Domestic Violence, who administers the ARPA funding for Maricopa County. They are willing to discuss being a grant administrator for the City of Flagstaff, and they have already developed a funding matrix to assist programs with both immediate needs, and then created a competitive RFP for supplemental funds. and then created a competitive RFP for supplemental funds, uh, due to having more providers locally. ACES DB is willing to share their knowledge and materials and discuss this option further. The goal is that any allocated funds the City of Flagstaff can provide would be low barrier as some of their providers locally, um, need immediately accessible funds for one-time projects. ARPA funds can be used over the course of several years and several of the providers need significant funding help in the near future. In October of 2023, our biggest federal funder will be making a 50% cut. So we are asking Council to allocate $51,000 needed by the three providers for one-time projects this fiscal year. In addition to another $250,000 that could be applied for and used in FY 2324 to assist with the funding cut. We will also be requesting additional funding from the county and have looked on, uh, that advocacy effort this week. However, they do not expect any decisions on ARPA funding until November at the earliest and possibly see extending the conversation into early 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Uh, Jen Rung, my apologies if I.
It's rungy, but that's fine. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd really hoped to be last, um, because all of my, um, fellow, uh, victim service providers came up with these great prepared statements and I did not. So, uh, my apologies. What this boils down to is that you have all these wonderful projects and I'm super impressed with what you're, you're aiming to do. But we have an existing program here in Flagstaff that's a really, a sort of deconstructed, uh, family advocacy center, um, format. And I'm happy to talk about that if you have any questions in the future. But essentially what it does is we have these longstanding nonprofits that provide required services throughout the county and the city in a way that removes a lot of the pressure off of the city and the county. Uh, we're looking at, as Heather just said, a 50% cut. For victim witness services alone, this is $351,000 in 2023. We have no way to prepare for this because all of our grants are reimbursable. So that means we have to spend the money to be able to get the money back. So we have no way to be able to produce additional revenue to prepare for this. So while I admire all of your, your projects, um, you have existing projects that are going to fail. Um, and they're going to fail, you know, with expectation. So we're bringing this to you early. We hope for your consideration to understand that the services we provide are important, they're based to this community. Um, we do things that are frontlines in ways that maybe most of the community would not want to do. You know, if we do not have these services in the future, I can't guarantee that I have crisis advocates to go out in the middle of the night and respond to the hospital for the domestic violence victim. Sorry, I have a hard time talking in the mask, so you'll have to bear with me. I'm like, trying to breathe. Okay, good. Um, the, another thing that we do as an extra is we have a children's domestic violence support group. It's very well attended. We send these kids down, um, the river, uh, once a year with Grand Canyon Youth and do a lot of extra things with them. These are pro sorts of programs that we would not be able to continue into the future. Um, I implore you to think about this, to recognize that existing programs need support as well, not just now, but in the future. And again, I am more than happy to come talk with you at length about this at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Eric Wolverton.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, City Staff. My name is Eric Wolverton. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Northern Arizona. I'm reaching out to you today as you're, uh, preparing yourself to address City Staff's proposals for ARPA funds. Thank you for taking the time to ensure these one-time funds are put to use in making Flagstaff a better city today and for all of our tomorrows. My hope is to encourage you all to consider allocating some or all of the 1.5 million dollars for affordable housing into a home loan fund managed by the city for nonprofits building affordable homes to utilize and supplement the costs of developing attainable housing. Creating a home loan fund will allow ARPA funds to be used in perpetuity for our needs now and our children's needs in the future. A loan fund will allow nonprofit housing developers to act like a business and not be solely reliant on community donations or creating solutions through taxation. It's time for affordable housing industry to reinvent itself, to create a new and better products that don't keep families in poverty, but celebrate their successes. Habitat for Humanity of Northern Arizona is doing just that with the construction of our first pilot starter home in 2022. These starter homes will allow families to buy into homeownership with only $1,250 down payment and mortgage payments less than $1,000 a month, all while saving $10,000 in equity every single year. So picture this approach. We want full circle. A homeless person enters Shelter Services and then enters Housing Solutions Transitional Housing to secure a job and savings for two years. Then for only $1,250, they can buy a Habitat Starter Home and create $30,000 in savings in just three years. Meaning we can get someone experiencing homelessness into self-sustaining homeownership in just five years. Coconino County is right now considering and entertaining using ARPA funds to create a similar fund like this in the amount anywhere between 500 and 750,000 dollars. I would like you to consider helping our community now and for future generations by allowing your partner nonprofits the ability to constantly construct affordable housing right here in Flagstaff, together in partnership with a housing loan fund. I know we can make this a reality. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric. I have a question for you, if you don't mind.
I don't mind. I love questions.
So the, uh, home loan fund, how much like per home would be required? So that way the, uh, an individual can only needs that 1250 to, to purchase a home?
Well, that's the beauty part is with our model, it's the homeowner that's coming up with that down payment. So the home loan fund would just work simply as a mechanism, no different than what Ms. Dar mentioned with CDBG funds. Only it's a loan, not a one-time allocation of funds. So it brings the opportunity for us to pay back with a small amount of interest those monies to the city to then be used over again. So it would be very much like a grant process or an RFP process to apply for those funds to receive that loan. Obviously, we would have to back up with collateral and ensure that the city will receive their monies.
Excellent. And how much would it take for one individual to, like, to, to get the ball rolling? Is it going to be more for down payment assistance, like $20,000, $30,000? Or would we have to allocate, for example, $400,000 to be able to front the whole price of the one home?
Well, that's where things are dramatically different with our starter home program. Our starter homes are only budgeted to, uh, cost us $125,000 per standalone home to build. And so these monies, uh, for instance, I would be requesting these monies to be able to build out a neighborhood, then sell those homes to individuals. I would receive mortgage payments and that's how I would pay back the city, um, on that loan.
Okay, I gotcha. All right. The, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
And I'll just state that I like the idea of having a, turning these one-time monies into revolving funds so that way they can work into perpetuity for our community. However much that's allocated, we can discuss, but I, I like these kinds of ideas that can help us, uh, perpetuate the good that these dollars could provide.
And if I may add, I can only speak for Habitat for Humanity, but honestly, we have projects right now on the docket to build tomorrow, but in excess of almost three and a half to five million dollars in need. So this revolving loan fund allows us to be able to borrow, um, down the road.
Excellent. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Ross Altenbaugh.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, um, City Manager and Staff. Thank you for having, uh, this discussion tonight. My name is Ross Altenbaugh and I am the Executive Director of Flagstaff Shelter Services. I represent, um, Flag Shelter in this conversation, although I represent other housing, um, the commission and that kind of thing. I'm not here in that capacity tonight. Um, I'm here today to prevent, to provide up, an update and appeal to each of you to consider supporting housing in Flagstaff in two major ways, and I also have one big question. The first is I'm excited to see and I'm, I'm thankful to see that the budget team has included uh, support for meaningful housing investment, um, with ARPA funding. After all, this is the council that determined housing is a crisis in our community and I'm thankful to see that up there. Um, I represent one of three co-chairs for the continuum of care, uh, for our local coalition to end homelessness. And I know that that coalition put a letter to you all, uh, back in September to support this, so I thank you for that. Um, the second thing I'd like to, the sort of question I would like to ask about that is within mind, um, that we have determined that housing is a crisis in our community. I'm, I have questions about the numbers in terms of seeing 1.5 or so million put towards housing, but, um, uh, but the alternate response, um, section of this has a 2.475 million dollar tag next to it. I have questions on why that program would not be listed under housing. Um, you've, you, you heard earlier the, um, Ms. Sarah Dar talk about, um, how housing funding could go through a process like the CDBG one, where, uh, projects could be ranked. Um, programs like, um, things like the shelter, uh, a, a day center could absolutely fit up under the same kind of ranking that happens through the CDBG process, which already aligns city values and, uh, things you've put forward to say are, um, are important to the city, are in alignment with state and federal, um, best practice around getting housing out to folks. So I just would really encourage you to think about, um, the numbers and what you have already determined as to be a crisis in our community and how there's a million dollar difference, um, in some of that, in, in, in those two things. Um, lastly, um, we are still, as an agency, as Flag Shelter, uh, providing daily COVID response. Um, if you are COVID positive in this community, you are sent to Flagstaff Shelter Services by the county, uh, by the hospital to have a quarantine if you are experiencing homelessness and are positive with COVID. So we are talking about recovery money, I understand, but the crisis is still here in our community.
Thank you, Ms. Altenbaugh. Uh, Councilmember's money?
Thank you, Marion. Thank you, Ross. Um, if you can speak, uh, to that ongoing struggle with COVID, I'd, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, you know, over the last 18 months, we had the opportunity to provide hoteling for both prevention and quarantining, uh, folks experiencing homelessness. That equated to about 250 people a day in our community in a hotel. Um, our, our, our agency suffered, uh, not suffered, that's, I, I think we took on the burden um, and the awesome responsibility of providing a public response for people experiencing homelessness so they could quarantine. But that was at a financial, uh, detriment to our agency. We were, um, uh, tentatively approved for FEMA reimbursement, but when it came push, when push came to shove, last April, when we were supposed to get that reimbursement any day, we were told by our elected officials at the state and federal level that FEMA had determined that our actions were not a disaster response because we were doing prevention work. And so that left, left us with a 1.2 million dollar deficit. The governor's office came in at $400,000 to help make us whole and asked us to come back to the city and county for the other two-thirds of that funding from ARPA to talk about true recovery effort. And that's kind of where we are today. Um, that doesn't, that doesn't include ongoing. Uh, we, we do have a relationship with the county and MOU in partnership that they will give us $50,000 over the course of the, uh, the next year and $50,000 the year after, should we need it to provide, um, a COVID response, which we are continuously doing. And the county will tell you is, um, will pale in comparison to the cost associated with this work. I can't get too far into the details, but we are, um, within, um, days of closing on, um, a large hotel in this community, um, that could be used to help supplement that COVID response in the future. So I see a light at the end of the tunnel in terms of renting rooms for people that are positive. Um, but it is a continued challenge for our agency and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that um, and how that, how we're in need.
Hey, a quick, quick follow-up. Um, Ross, is there a specific ask that you're, that you want to just reemphasize for me?
Yeah, so I had, I've had discussions with a number of, of folks at the city, um, that, again, the, the governor's office came in at a third, um, of our 1.2, um, million dollar ask that was denied by FEMA, uh, came in at 400,000 and was asked for us to go back to the city council and to the board of supervisors to come in at one-third of each of that cost to help make us whole. And that was directly from the governor's office saying, this is what ARPA money is for.
So do you feel comfortable with the current proposal of $400,000?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just wanted to note that, that we, we hear you and that's what, the numbers went from 200,000 in September to 400,000.
Thank you, Mayor.
With, yeah, this, this latest round, so. Uh, Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ross, for all you do for our community, uh, especially for those who don't have anybody else fighting for them. I'll, I'll leave this up to you whether or not you want to answer it or not. Uh, but I wanted to provide you the space to explore something. Being, being someone who spent years, uh, scrapping together funds, uh, to improve and expand the facility you use at Flagstaff Shelter Services, what, what are your thoughts on, uh, 24, uh, uh, a 2.4 million dollar price tag on, uh, creating new facilities for our alternate care efforts? And again, share as you want to, this is, this is your chance to share. Um, but if, if you're, if your thoughts on that aren't ready to be articulated yet, that's fine too. No pressure.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Aslan. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to answer that question. I did power poses before I came here tonight, so I feel like I could probably answer it without too much shaking. Um, you know, it's frustrating. I mean, I have to say that, um, there, you've heard from providers in the, in the room tonight that are struggling at their future, um, in terms of, and, and for different reasons. But, um, you have a vibrant and dynamic community of service providers that are doing a lot of the things that are, are, um, being requested of some of the other funding. And, you know, um, the idea that we would pay to put a bus out there with showers on it instead of just working with NAEP to, to have transportation to the shelter or other programs that have showers in place, um, where people can then connect to larger services around, um, health and housing, uh, feels, um, it is frustrating. And, you know, I understand that, 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 that bus, um, uh, no pun intended, is, is moving. And, um, you know, I don't want to get away in, in the way of that. I want to work, um, as an agency with partners to make what happens, uh, what needs to happen, happen. And I, if, if, if there's anything Flagstaff Shelter Services can do to be a part of that solution, we always want to. I just would really encourage you, um, that this, to, to remember that this is lightning bolt funding and, um, that it's windfall or whatever you want to call it, and that we have a housing crisis on our hands. And, uh, the solution to homelessness is housing. Um, and I think that we continue to perpetuate, uh, but people in poverty. Uh, we continue to perpetuate a system of, um, keeping people disenfranchised and disconnected from services if we make it more comfortable for them to be impoverished as opposed to helping them, uh, connect to, to services that can, um, like Eric said, you know, homelessness to housing, housing ownership in five years, that's nuts. Um, and as, I think it is, this is the council and this is the staff that could really, uh, take this money and make something really powerful happen if given the opportunity. So I'd put 2.4 million or 2.475 under housing and let, let your excellent housing department rank proposals that then could make room for, if, 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 if a, if a standalone day service center is what is needed and makes more sense and can serve more people and has to go bet, uh, that has to go to bat with the numbers I have to go to bat on with CDBG. When I come in and say, we serve thousands of people each year, I want to stand next to a program that's getting 2.4 million and I want to see that they're going to serve more than 40 people a year. And I wonder, I want to understand that. And I want the city council to be able to stand proud behind a program and behind the nonprofits that say. stand proud behind a program and behind the nonprofits that sit here tonight with you on this. So I appreciate the opportunity to answer that. I am a team player. We will get behind whatever's out there, and we'll probably even, we'll, we'll, we'll apply if it's appropriate, but I would say, have it go in the same door that, you know, where you put your priorities. Housing, it's a crisis.
Well, you were clearly able to articulate that, so.
I told you I power posed.
Thank you for sharing that. You know, I think it's an important perspective. Obviously, there are a variety of opinions in the room, and we are, in a way, inventing the wheel as we're rolling down the hill in our vehicle here. So I just ask for you to have patience with us as well during this process, and hopefully the process will, will, will figure out the correct form as we move along here, and, and these things can sneak up on us. So I do appreciate your constant vigilance and, and the perspective that you bring to the, to the table.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Altamont, for standing up and speaking up today. Let me focus on the, your daily costs in terms of COVID response. I understand last year's cost was 1.2 million, but that was until like December 31st, right? So what is your actual cost servicing the, serving the community as, as, as providing quarantine and isolation for, for potentially positive cases? And then I have two other questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. You know, I, I think that this is going to upset you, but for the number of hotel rooms, we thank you for your, your advocacy, Councilmember Salas, in getting those hotels in place, but we were spending close to $100,000 a week.
A week.
So when you hear 1.2 million, that's after the other requests that we made. That was for, you know, 78 of the most medically vulnerable senior citizens in our community to have access to four walls and a roof in three different hotels, and then about 125 other folks that were, on the day that our agency made the choice to do this, that were at the shelter. So we cleared the shelter that day back in April of 2020, and we stayed there for literally a year and then operated the, the COVID positive hotel in addition. So those costs are all put together. The state came in with a lot of funding. CDBG locally, you guys really stepped up and supported us in so many ways, and we're so grateful for that. And this is kind of where the, the last piece that we thought was going to be reimbursed by FEMA, that, that we had worked out every component of, of leveraging and every, every dollar we could shake from anywhere. But I'll tell you that for the better part of eight and a half months of that, we didn't have a, a single positive among, among that population. And I, I think there's a lot of other positives that came from that and was a really beautiful lesson in what housing and how housing is healthcare for what it did for our community. But, you know, it wasn't fun.
Thank you for the, the very honest and truthful response there. So the 400,000, you know, suggested here for, for Concord Care, but it doesn't include the, the services, related services that last year council approved for, for the COVID relief funding, such as the, the front door, all the partnerships with the Catholic charities and the continuum of care. So now is your chance to come up with a wish list for that. So in addition to Concord Care and shelters, what number can we propose to continue providing or strengthen the services that, that the front doors, Catholic charities, and the continuum of care that council has, has, has allocated COVID relief funds for last year?
Yeah, I mean, I think that what you're, what you're hearing from at least myself, and I, I obviously, again, represent Flagstaff Shelter, but I think I've heard tonight in the audience, and I know the continuum of care put a letter to you all, is that there's a lot of really exciting things going on in our community. Housing Solutions just purchased a hotel. We're purchasing a hotel. There's money out there for us to continue to do that, and those hotels look like emergency and transitional shelter now, but in a very soon period of time, look like permanent housing in our community, which is, right, like, that's the lightning bolt, is, is the housing opportunities, what Eric described in terms of, of loan, revolving loan period. I mean, there's, there's a lot of really smart people doing this work, including city staff, that, you know, between front door all the way to homeownership, there's a lot of nice ways that this could provide not just more funding to something that is not, like, really, like, solution ending financing that could really move the needle on, on this crisis. So I can't give you exact numbers, and I don't think it would be fair for me to represent that conversation, to be honest with you, because there's a lot of really great people that would have voice in that, but I think we could come up with it pretty quickly if you gave us some time.
So of, so my last question has something to do with your response, is would, would you be supportive of, of funding that would support the continuum of care from homelessness to, to homeownership, but it will be like a revolving fund, which is loans for, for low income families? And so it's going to be a combination of revolving fund for, for loans, for first time homeownership for low income families, and two will be grants for nonprofits?
Yes, I would be supportive of that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Davana McGlaughlin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Davana McGlaughlin, and I have the honor of serving on your housing commission as well as Ross and others in the room. I am not speaking tonight as a commissioner, but in my capacity as CEO of Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona, which is a local nonprofit housing provider. I want to start my comments tonight with a heartfelt thanks. We were chatting with you guys a month or so ago, six weeks ago. I was in my car at the ice rink, and at that time, the amount of funds being talked about for housing investment was $450,000. And so I am so grateful to this council for saying that's not enough and for saying that the emergency housing declaration you all passed needs to be invested in with this one-time ARPA funding, and we have an opportunity, like Ross said, to have a lightning bolt moment to make significant difference and significant, significant impact, and I thank you for that investment. Mr. Mayor, you were talking earlier about the Housing America Month proclamation, and you listed a comprehensive and heartbreaking plethora of statistics which show clearly why the ARPA investment in housing is so critical. So I do just want to say thank you for the increase in housing investment presented tonight. The proposed 1.5 million dollars in housing, I'm hoping is a floor. Please don't lower it. If y'all want to throw more money towards housing, I think we'd welcome it, and I think the community could really benefit and utilize those funds wisely, effectively, and efficiently. I do want to ask council to consider distributing proposed ARPA funds through a competitive grant process. I believe that would follow the procurement recommendation requirements that Mr. Tatter indicated are required by the federal funds, and it would enable the city to expand funds, or expend, I can't read my writing, sorry, expend funds in a timely and effective manner. It would seek leveraged funds to make your investments go farther and to help more families, and it would ensure your housing experts, your housing section reviews and vets the applicants for project feasibility and organizational capacity. As an agency that provides victim services and got to stand up here with colleagues earlier tonight for the Domestic Violence Month proclamation, I also want to express support for our victim service partners who are asking for ARPA investment for their programs. We need them to respond to victims in crisis, to provide emergency shelter, and to help victims in need. And I also want to appreciate and express appreciation for the proposed funding for food service agencies, as we've seen and relied on their increased service delivery for our own share and manner residents during the pandemic, and know that the demand for their services has increased. So thank you. I think the, the proposal tonight is, is, is tremendous, and, and I, I hope we can, as a community, see the investment of these funds to help our most vulnerable neighbors and friends and to help move the needle on housing affordability. So thank you so much for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you, Davana. Vice Mayor has a question for you.
Sorry, Siri's listening in. I apologize. Terrifying.
Siri, shut up. Can you, thank you, Davana. Can you speak a little to the relationship Housing Solutions has with the city in terms of down payment assistance?
Sure. Y'all have invested general fund dollars towards helping low, moderate income households open the door to homeownership through down payment assistance loans. We contracted with the city to administer that program on your behalf to determine income and household eligibility, to do the outreach and marketing, to leverage housing counseling dollars to make sure families are making an educated financial decision. It's the biggest financial decision most families make, and to ensure that the funds are spent effectively and efficiently based on that contract. So we've been able to provide down payment assistance to over 430 families since 1999, much of that through city investment, whether it was general funds, sometimes CDBG, and then we bring in external sources like wish funds or state housing funds if they're available. And so this year, I think our contract is about $170,000, I want to say we can help eight families with the proposed levels of assistance. The need is greater, but we are tremendously honored to keep helping families open the door to homeownership. And you also have invested in your own employer assisted housing program that we are also contracted to administer, which helps recruit and retain your employees. Did I answer that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Thank you. And if I understand it correctly, the funds are paid back if the homeowner sells the home, right? Or are they paid back in the meantime?
It depends on what program you're talking about. So the city's employer assisted housing program is a loan, but it's forgiven on a prorated basis over 10 years of employment and owner occupancy. So if an employee stays with y'all for 10 years, it would not be repaid, it would be forgiven. The broader community program is always repaid because there's just not enough money to go around, honestly, to forgive it. So the assistance is repaid when a triggering event happens, and that could be the sale of a house. It could be the family no longer owner occupies it, or it could be that they want to refinance their home to pull equity out in order to do whatever they want with that equity. We don't judge, we just say you have to pay back the city first. That program also has repayment based on an equity share model, so the city should get a little bit of peace, a piece of the appreciation that the family has seen during their ownership period, hoping to increase funds to help another family buy a similar home in the future. Yeah.
Thank you, Davana. All right. Teri Medexa?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My name is Teri Medexa, and I'm the executive director for the Flagstaff Downtown Business Alliance. I'm glad to be here today and listen to this important discussion. And I, I do want to say, of course, I'm here to represent the small business side of things, but I really support everything that I'm hearing and all those who have spoken before me. So having said that, I do understand the critical need to prioritize housing, social service, alternative outreach strategies, and infrastructure. But I also think it is important to remember the pandemic's devastating impact on small and locally owned businesses. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy, yet they remain fragile as they try to navigate the ongoing effects of the pandemic. I would like to share with you details of the small business relief grant that has been mentioned tonight. I've heard a couple of questions, and I hope I can provide some clarification. The city of Flagstaff, Coconino County, and NAU each contributed $10,000 for a total of $30,000. The reason that the FDBA was involved is because we initiated this with the city, the county, and NAU. The city did not come to us to say, hey, help us get funds into the community. We said at the earliest days of the pandemic, our small businesses are closed, our hotels are closed, we've got to do something to help them, and we looked at best practices in other communities and saw this is what was working. So we came to the city, we said, city, could you help us with this county, NAU? And we received that support. So this was initiated by DBA, not the city coming to us to manage this. The other thing I think is important is that we, by managing this, we could get money in the hands of the businesses quickly. So from start to finish, from the application to the check being sent out was two weeks. So the businesses got money in their hands, which they desperately needed immediately versus sort of waiting and going through a months-long process. We were able to bring in these other partners, like I mentioned, the county and NAU, and then we distributed 100% of that money. So we did not keep an admin or a management fee. 30,000 came in, 30,000 went out, and this went out citywide. So it is not, I mean, we're the DBA, but more importantly, we wanted to get money in the hands of our small businesses citywide. And I think Ms. Hanson mentioned the county's portion actually went countywide. So we saw some business.
Councilmember Salas?
I have a question for Ms. Medexa. Ms. Medexa, can you describe the process for the city, the citywide and the countywide grant process? That's the question number one. And number two, how do you see the, the grant to tourism-related industries? Because as, as we know, the number one reason why, why Flagstaff, why visitors visit Flagstaff is discover downtown Flagstaff.
Thank you for that. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for the question. If, if you could remind me of the first question, I got your second one, but the first one.
The, I guess, the, the process of the, the city, the city grant, grant awards process and the county, because the county had also pitched in for the small business grants.
Thank you. So I appreciate that. So the DBA managed this process. We did put out a press release, the city, the county, NAU helped us get the word out to our business community. The application process at the time, with only $30,000, we only kept that open for a week. With more funding, we'll keep it open longer and get more businesses to apply, but in a week, we received over 30 applications. We had a committee of five reviewing those and scoring them, and then we were able to distribute small micro grants in the amount of $750 to $3,000 to 24 businesses. And if, if I may, I just want to, I, I want to read you just a little bit of what I heard from our businesses. We were able to focus on businesses that had not received PPP, EIDL, or other funding, and we looked at cash reserves, and we looked at how long a business has been open. So we weren't necessarily going to invest in a business that was open two or three months that was going to close anyway. And if they were a law firm that had operating cash reserves in place, they were not the recipients of this funding. But what we did hear was, thank you so much, this is so necessary, you have done so much for my little preschool, and just one other, because it's one of my favorites. This person wrote, is this even legit? I have applied for so much help, and you were the first to actually help. And so, you know, these businesses are still dealing with the effects of the pandemic, the need. The need is great. We continue to hear from people who need even just small amounts of grant funding to help with their utilities, to help with employment. You know, we're sort of dealing with some new challenges within our business community, so this kind of program will really help. And the only reason I'm here tonight to suggest that DBA manage this is because we can do it quickly. There's a template for it, and we're not taking an admin fee, and we can get money out city and countywide. And we are working right now with the county and NAU. The county does have a line item budgeted for this. It will go before the Board of Supervisors this month, so I can't commit to you what that is, but it's a significant number. And then we're working with NAU to increase their contribution from the $10,000 we saw last year. Did that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
About question number two?
Oh, about tourism. Well, our tourism businesses, if you remember, at the earliest days of the pandemic, it was the restaurants and the hotels that were shut. We didn't have any international travel. And even though you are beginning to see travel resuming, and of course, they're coming to Flagstaff because we are a premier destination, thanks to our excellent team at Discover Flagstaff and with your Economic Vitality Director, people, of course, are coming here to be outdoors. So, you're seeing and you're hearing, you know, that business is happening, but we are no way back to where we should be. And so, our tourism businesses still need this help. They are seeing drops in international travel. They are not seeing the convention and meeting business return, and so they need some help as well. I would suggest that these grants, whatever the amount is, should be kept separate. I don't think you should have a business of five employees fighting for the same funding as a hotel with 300 employees. Their needs are different. Their stresses and challenges are different. So, I would suggest that you consider keeping these grants separate so you don't have these businesses competing, because I'm not sure there's a fairness factor there. But I would really encourage you to consider keeping this tourism grant because our businesses still need it. And again, I'm speaking citywide, not just downtown.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Teri, for your advocacy and your work in our community. So, a couple of questions. I do struggle with some of the proposed numbers, and I have had talks with different key individuals at the city who help with the topics we're talking about tonight. You know, with a $10,000 investment at the city, plus $10,000 from the county and $10,000 from the NAU, we were able to help 27 businesses. You know, if we did something like $250,000 for small businesses, and let's say the county did something like 200, and then NAU, I have no idea where even a guest ballpark them, how many businesses do you expect us to be able to support?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Shimonie, I think that's a great question, and I think what we would have to do is look at what the qualifications for this grant are. With the $30,000, we really focused on the smallest businesses. So, we had a limit of 10 or fewer employees. I believe the city describes a small business as 250 or fewer, or there's already a number set. So, we would have to look at what the funding partners want that number to be. Do you want it to be really focused on the smallest of businesses or 50 or fewer employees? Because that's going to impact how many applicants we receive. And then with the $30,000, it was a very generous number from our funding partners, but it was relatively small to spread across the entire community. So, our numbers, we made a decision of 750 to 3,000 max, and so we'd have to look at that, too. Would our funding partners want to see a different range? Would it be 750 to 5,000? And again, that would affect our applicants as well. So, given that I can't really answer, what I can say is, looking at those factors, looking at what other communities have done, if we had 500, 600, 1,000, or more, we would be able to provide service to hundreds of businesses.
And quick last question. So, the community ambassador position that we're talking about with the $75,000, it was mentioned that the DBA was going to be a financial partner. Can you put any dollar amounts next to what that partnership looks like?
Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Shimonie, I would say at a minimum, it would be $75,000. We would be looking to DBA as well as the county and their workforce development to help support that. So, and, you know, again, I just want to mention the importance of looking at best practices. We looked at similar cities. We looked at what's working. How do we make these connections to the services that are already existing? We don't expect to duplicate any effort. We just want to make those connections, and so we look at best practices. And if the city kicks in 75, then you're going to see something equal or more than brought to the table by the DBA and hopefully the county.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. I had a question. So, who is on the board of five? Was it chosen as in, like, one person from NAU, one from the city, et cetera?
Mayor, very good question. We had five. One was from the county. We had two from the city, and we had one from NAU, and we had a small business owner. That actually was not a downtown business owner.
Excellent. That's good to know.
But I will point out, that business owner was brought on because they were not applying.
Gotcha. Yeah. That's good. And I'm, I really, I know we've spoken about the community ambassadors before, and I really like this idea. And just say that with, anything that we can get with matching funds council and to leverage this, I think is a great idea. And if this is something the county is interested in, and that you might be interested in, I would say that that is a good use of our funds. So, thank you, Teri.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here tonight and hoping that you view me and the DBA as a partner of the city. Whatever we can do to help, we are willing to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Brooke Fulton.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager and staff. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear all of our comments tonight. This is a matter that is near and dear to our hearts, as you can tell. My name is Brooke Fulton. I am the Program Manager at Northern Arizona Care and Services After Assault. We are the sole provider of medical forensic exams to adolescent and adult victims of sexual assault and domestic violence strangulation in Coconino County. We work very closely with Northland Family Health Center, Housing Solutions of Northern Arizona, and Victim Witness Services. And combined, these four service agencies have been providing services in Flagstaff and Coconino County for over 100 years. So, I'd really like to echo Ms. Ronge's statement about our establishment in this community, the services that we provide. We work very closely with each other, and we have a really unique model. Most counties in Arizona have a family advocacy center model. We have a deconstructed model, and that works really, really well for us and our victims. If we were to, well, we, all four of our agencies have already experienced a loss of funding due to COVID. However, all of our agencies also receive VOKA funding, and if the anticipated cuts go forward by 2023, we're all expected to lose a lot more. NACASA won't be losing as much as Victim Witness will be, but our funding from VOKA covers the salary of one full staff member, and that's not a ton in the scheme of things compared to some of the other agencies. But we have a staff of three, so that's a third of our staff. Without relief from ARPA funds, these agencies are at risk of not being able to provide much-needed services to very vulnerable individuals in our community. The homeless folks are disproportionately more likely to experience victimization, as we know. And with the approval and funding of the new alternative responsive team, I think the funding would be an additional insult. I think it would be counter-effective move and catastrophic to service providers as we're moving in this new direction of alternative response, which I do think is amazing. If we were moving forward with the alternative response while victim service agencies were cutting down, that would be incredibly detrimental to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, sorry. If you come back here.
Sorry. I need a couple of seconds just to let that sink in. So, what do you request of us in terms of allocating funding? And I heard from Victim Witness earlier and other, other public speakers, what number can we consider in terms of locating funding, addressing domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, in support of those service providers in the community?
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. It's difficult to put that number into, you know, to quantify it right now. NACASA has a myriad funding sources. In 2020, just from the decreased number of exams that we had, we can estimate around $8,000. Those costs are going to vary year by year. Again, if we do, if VOKA, the Victims of Crime Act, is cut in half in 2023, as suspected, that's another 60 grand per year that we'd be losing. So, that would be, again, an entire staff member. And then, you know, it's difficult to say as we go on. Our numbers in 2021 have definitely been disproportionately decreased due to COVID. We've been a little bit more sporadic. So, it's difficult to quantify exactly how much we're looking at. Like I said, in 2020, just a decrease in exams around $8,000.
I'll make it easier for you.
Sure.
Will 250,000 sufficient to support significant, significantly support our local service providers with respect to addressing domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking?
Mm-hmm.
250,000.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Will 250,000 be sufficient to support local service providers directly assisting victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking?
I think that would be a start. Like Ms. Ronge stated, they're looking at losing almost $400,000 per year. So, I think it would be a start, but I don't think it would cover the loss that we're facing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shaleen Seward?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager and staff. I'm Shaleen Seward. I'm the Executive Director at Northland Family Health Center. So, Northland Family Health Center provides emergency shelter, trauma therapy, human trafficking services, and legal advocacy to around 800 victims of domestic violence, child abuse, sexual assault, and human trafficking every year. Additionally, we answer over 3,000 phone calls from victims who are wanting support, safety planning, and resources. So, we partner with our other service agencies, as has been outlined, to fulfill together as a team the many needs that victims have in our community, ranging from shelter to exams to court representation and support, legal advocacy, mental health support, et cetera. And today, our local service, victim services program are asking the city council for support of $300,000. And so, it's two parts that we are seeking. One is an immediate need for funding this fiscal year for items such as PPE, of which Northland now has $250 left in our current budget for PPE, and we are housing people in shelter who still are testing positive for COVID as well. We also need some improvements for air quality for hotels. Victims have unique needs where they can't necessarily go to another shelter program. They need a safe, secure hotel room, and if they're COVID positive, we're trying to mitigate them, you know, reducing that risk of children and unvaccinated people in shelter also receiving COVID, and air quality is a huge piece of being able to do that in partnership with providing hotels when they are in that quarantine stage. So, there are some immediate needs with our programs, but there's also this pending 2023 reduction in our federal funding. And so, we're requesting around $250,000 to provide support to our, all of our victim programs, specifically with Northland. What this impact will have is about 70 to 80 victims could no longer access safe shelter. We would see perhaps about 250 victims annually no longer being able to receive trauma therapy. We've been trying to expand our trauma therapy department for several years because we maintain a waitlist. We have more people needing therapy, especially during this pandemic with mental health crisis occurring, and now we're looking at cutting it in half. And so, that's going to have a pretty large impact on victims in our community who, again, are navigating their own well-being, their trauma, as well as being in a pandemic. So, we also will reduce about 40 individuals with legal advocacy support, and this is just our program numbers, as Victim Witness has their own as well.
Thank you, Shaleen. Yeah, Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Shaleen. I just wanted to ask you if there were other losses and efforts that you can speak to that you might not have had the time to speak to.
As far as, so, you know, our priorities is for, sorry, going back to my notes. Our priority is to sustain, at Northland Family Health Center, sustain the program where we are at. And even with our shelter, as I mentioned, that we have 3,000 calls. Many of those are people requesting shelter and continuing to call until a bed space opens. So, when we're talking about reducing shelter bed spaces, we are, we already have more people requesting services than, again, we can meet in any given day. So, shelter services, mental health services, support services to victims. As Victim Witness has shared, they have thousands of victims across the Coconino County that will be impacted by not having victim advocates be able to go throughout the area to provide support to them. So, I think I hit most of my highlights.
And then a quick question, Shaleen. If we were to decide funding that 300,000 you mentioned to specifically be utilized for mental health counseling, housing, crisis response, rehab, and PPE, are we missing anything major in that list?
I look at you.
I know that's kind of a group question, but.
That sounds full. I believe we've hit the major points there. Mental health counseling, victim housing, shelter, crisis response, rehab, and PPE. Yes, those are the core of what all of our victim services providers do here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. Kenny Glover? And then we'll take the virtual participants after this.
Hello again. I just, I'm not very good at this, so thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council for having me here. Really, I just, all my answers, all my questions really been answered. I just want to make an observation that I saw here. Earlier, I saw solidarity in the dedication of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and then I see only 400,000 given to shelter services. That doesn't make sense. So, that's all I got to say on that.
Thank you, Kenny. All right. With that, we'll keep virtually Monica Foose and then Dan Powell afterward.
How many online participants do we have?
Yeah, how many do we have? We had, we still just have two? Okay.
Monica, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Monica, you can go ahead and give your comments now.
Okay, thank you. Hello and good evening to the Flagstaff Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the City Council members. My name is Monica Foose, and I'm the Executive Director of the Flagstaff Family Food Center. And I wanted to thank you for allowing me to share and update what is going on with the Flagstaff Family Food Center and with the community in the previous meeting and here at tonight's meeting. To jump right in, the Flagstaff Family Food Center over the past year and a half has been supported by the National Guard in the form of a truck and troops. In 2021 so far, they have assisted us in serving just under 7 million pounds of food to families here in Flagstaff. The demand for food assistance is increasing monthly, with 53% of the demand coming from new families who are just visiting us for the first time. In July 2021, we served nearly 384,000 pounds. And in September last month, we, it doubled to about 641,000 pounds. So that's a pretty significant jump. And coming into the holidays, we expect that increase to continue. We served over 6,000 families in September. We've been able to meet the ever-increasing need for food because of the National Guard's presence. However, on November 27th, which at the previous meeting I had said was December 23rd, but that has been changed, unfortunately, in this world of unknowns and changes. But now on November 27th, the troops and the infrastructure they bring will be redeployed. We'll know, we will not be able to grow with the demand at that point. And a disruption to the level of services we provide most likely could occur. Our solution to this quickly approaching crisis is the need to request 75,000 to support in a slightly used refrigerated truck. This purchase will allow us to continue meeting the needs of the families in Flagstaff during the holiday season and because of the consistency of the growing demand throughout the coming year. I'll just go on to, so that 75,000, when we spoke previously, it was 300. But that 75,000 is in that 300,000 request, just to be clear. So 75,000 was for truck. But since I don't know what is being decided or what might be decided, getting any kind of confirmation allows me to release funds to purchase that used truck. And and I can go into what the other 300,000 was for. But that 75,000 is in that request from previously. We've been serving the community for 30 years now, and this huge increase in need for nutritional support and services is a direct result from the pandemic. We'll continue to serve at the elementary schools. We've been asked to also include the Head Start program location.
Thank you, Monica. Councilmember Shoney?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a lot of questions tonight, so thank you for your patience, Council. Monica, thank you for your call and all you do for the community. Question for you. If we were to able to get you $300,000 in total, what would that mean for you?
That would be that 75,000 for this used, slightly used. I say that because there's no new trucks available due to that computer chip issue. I have talked at length with Penske and a few other places that can get me a slightly used truck. So that's the reason for the slightly used. And then the 120,000 was for additional stuff. That would grow our programs in the community. And when I say that, it is towards the mobile distribution throughout the community. It's been hugely successful in bringing food to people versus having them line up at a food bank. The other 100,000 is actually to expand our homebound and senior citizen delivery. We currently only deliver to 30 seniors in need. And we all know there's quite a few more than that. And particularly in the snowy season, getting a wrap at the door and food delivered is is really important, and our seniors need our help more now than ever. And that's what that meat money was requested for.
Okay, thank you, Monica. So it sounds like $300,000 would suffice?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I had a question for you, Monica. What is the county pitching in for this potential purpose? Because I know, you know, a lot of this is within the city of Flagstaff, but you also serve, you know, quite a few outside of our jurisdiction who we also need to be able to support and help. But I'm just wondering where the county is in helping to assist in this.
Yes, and thank you for asking that, yes. So the county has given us 31,000, and that is towards the new truck. So to let you know, we we ordered a new truck last March. We're not getting that truck truck till well into 2022, end of summer. And and so with even our our things, the demands from the community and needs from the community that are on a waiting list, that new truck will be in full use. That includes our distribution to Loop and Cameron. And then also the support of resource staff that would not only speak to the food available resources, but all resources available in the community. And so funds were given for that position as well. And but for the truck specifically, that was the 31,000, and that was set aside for the new truck. This is actually, and this 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 used, slightly used truck, under 120,000 miles refrigerated reefer with a lift gate to lower those pallets, is actually going to substitute for the National Guard leaving right now far earlier than we had thought. If that that answers your questions.
Yeah, thank you. And the other question I had was, is the, recently, I do believe you received an award from the Arizona Community Foundation? Was any of those funds designated for this particular purpose as well? Or was that for general operations or?
Yeah, so those are for our hunger relief operational funds. It's about 1.2 million per year, and that is right in line with what they've given us in the past to continue operation. Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the explanation on that. Any other questions, Council? All right, thank you, Monica. We'll go to Dan Powell now. Hope you are on mute. Can't hear you quite yet.
Dan, at the top of your screen, you should have a little microphone that you can unclick. Now, let me try something else here really quick. Did that work? Dan, perhaps you can back out of Teams and then just rejoin, and let's see if that resets things for you. And Mayor, he was our second public commenter online, so if we want to give him a moment to come back in?
Yeah, let's give him a sec. Let it reboot. We can hydrate.
All right, Dan, are you able to unmute now?
No, we can't.
I'm gonna try.
We, I mean, we could do that. We put a telephone and put it by the mic.
Okay, let me try that. That's all right. All right, Dan, go ahead and try it again. Does it give you an option?
There it is.
There we go. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you all for taking the time to hear me out today. Sitting here watching this has been pretty incredible. And I hope, for the sake of the social services in our community, that we can get more funds in the future to help these folks out because it seems like there's definitely a need. I am here to speak on behalf of the small business community. I'm a small business owner in downtown Flagstaff. And I just wanted to give you some perspective on how these grant dollars have really helped us over the past year. We have had kind of a unique year in that we own Pay and Take. It's a small bar downtown. And so we were, you know, government mandated last year to be shut down for seven months without much support, to tell you the truth. So these small grants have helped us tremendously over the last year. You know, in our eyes, it's, the pandemic is not over. We we see this sort of two-month, two-month cycle, as you all might see that as well, where kind of it peaks and then it mellows out. We kind of see business go up and down with that. So there's a lot of anxiety in the future, just not knowing what is going to happen as a business owner and how we are going to stay afloat. You know, it's easy when we can utilize our patio in the warmer months, and even in the cold months, that that works. But, you know, when it is cold and folks need to go inside, we are very curious how this winter is going to play out. So every every little bit of these grant dollars for small businesses really does help businesses like ours stay afloat. And we are thankful for the partnership that we've had with the Downtown Business Alliance, the city of Flagstaff, and the state in the past that has really helped us out over the past year. You know, we've really had to be creative and and think outside the box and how to move forward. And these micro grants have helped us. You know, we just, we hope you see the value of locally owned businesses in Flagstaff and in that they bring the vibrancy to downtown and that they can, or Flagstaff in general, and in what it means to make Flagstaff as special as it is. So anyway, I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions, Council? All right, well, with that, oh, Councilmember Aslan. Oh, for city staff. Great, thank you, Dan. And we will move on to council questions and discussion with the city staff here. Go for it.
One of the reasons I'd like to begin tonight is I I will be physically leaving the dais shortly, but I will still be on the meeting. So I just wanted to make certain that my my physical absence here does not mean that I'm away and I will still be able to engage in the conversation as it goes forward. But I appreciate being able to share some of my thoughts here to to kick us off. And I'm I'm sort of a big picture guy. I don't want to get too into the weeds of this with actual dollar figures. So I might be a good person to start with in that regard as well. I will tell you, I am very pleased with the way that this white paper looks as it was presented to us at the beginning of the evening. I think there are going to be some additional tweaks, but I just want to thank our city staff and our management for putting all the hard work into playing with these numbers and getting them to look more like what we're hoping to see after our last conversation. There was a lot of good movement here. And and while there might be some some lingering issues from our first conversation, that also might be because we're we're not monolithic about this, and we have a variety of thoughts coming into into how we move forward. So the the big thing for me, as as we look into this and we start moving money around again, I think it was said a couple of weeks ago that that we shouldn't think of this as a zero-sum game. But that is exactly what this is. We have a finite number of amount of money to work with. And if we're going to give that money in higher amounts to one thing, we're going to have to take it from somewhere else. That's the definition of a zero-sum game. And that's unfortunate, but it is what we're dealing with here. And I will just say, in a perfect world, we could fund all of these things at adequate levels and go out to pizza at the end of the night and feel really good about ourselves, I guess. But we're here to make some hard choices. We have different ideas about how to do that. We've each been elected to sit here to deliberate on these things. And I am confident at the end of the evening that the the group wisdom of the seven of us will lift up and do the best good for the most people at the end of the day. The value system I bring to this table is to take care of the least of these and to to focus on our safety net, which is frail and crumbling and has been for years. There are a lot of people in this town who are really in desperate need of these monies. And I I happen to believe firmly that if we want to crawl out of our housing problem, that we need to be providing housing. So that's that's where my, that's where my my true north is on this. And it it really pains me to to have to play a zero-sum game where we take some of these funds from Peter to pay Paul. But that's the way it has to be. And I will tell you, I'll try to make this easy for our management team. Others will have more specific thoughts. But I I would like to see as much money as possible go into housing assistance and support of nonprofits. And if that has to come from small business support and education and vaccine outreach, then then so be it. I don't think we should mess with city services or our revenue loss any further. Those numbers have already been reduced, and I thank the city staff again for making some of those hard decisions. But we need that baseline just to just to continue moving forward in so many ways where we have also been struggling as an institution. I'm glad that the 2.4 million for for facilities or services in the alternate care column provides that flexibility, facility or services. We may need a facility, but I'm sensitive to the fact that facilities already exist in town that we might be able to utilize in some creative ways as we continue to move forward and collaborate and and turn over rocks and come up with some good ideas. And that might be where I can leave it here. I I would hope that that the the starter home projects that Mr. Wolverton from Habitat for Humanity discussed, those home loan funds, will will come up again. I I hope that becomes a part of the decision-making process. And I also just wanted to say generally that where we can leverage funds, I am in total agreement that we should be doing that as much as possible. And for that 400,000 that goes to shelters and caregite care, please bear in mind that 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 amount of money will be tripled at the end of the day, hopefully. But where we can leverage funds, even with small businesses and tourism, I hope we can maintain at least a minimal amount of funding in order to do that. Thank you very much. And once I leave, again, I will still be here, the way things work these days. And I appreciate the flexibility to to be traveling down to Phoenix tonight for personal reasons, but to be able to to do that in a safe way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation tonight and for everyone who showed up and and spoke. Such great minds in this room and on the phone. I am too a big thinker, so I'm going to go along the lines of Councilmember Aslan in my comments. I am definitely for the community ambassadors downtown. I have a business downtown, and I can definitely see see how that will be a major game changer. I have a business downtown, and I can definitely see, see how that will be a major game changer for our small businesses that are downtown. And with the housing, you know, absolutely, I believe that a lot of what we're talking about tonight, housing is a main component. So I, you know, I understand the competitive grant process, and I, I think that's very important. But I do also appreciate Eric Wolverton and his comments with the revolving home loan fund. And I certainly hope that Habitat will become more of the conversation. And I want to hear more from you, Eric. So speaking of being a small business owner, I'm going to tell you that this pandemic has been something I hope I never have to go through again, and it's not over. So as we have this conversation, please remember that this has been tough. Being a small business owner is difficult as it is. And the pandemic has just created kind of a tough no win situation. And I do think that the small business grant and the tourism should remain separate. I don't feel like I should be competing for a grant that a hotel is competing for. I have five employees. And I have almost closed probably a couple of times already during the pandemic, and I don't know what I'm going to wake up to tomorrow. And I'm not the only one. All of our small business owners are feeling the same way. Let's see, where was I? I am okay with taking out the vaccination outreach. And I would, I don't know where exactly I want the $10,000 to go, but I can tell you, housing would be one. Our social services would be one. And for now, I think that is all. I just, again, appreciate everyone who has been here tonight talking. And, and I hear your voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to echo the thanks to all of the organizations that have made such great points and have enlightened us to the work that's going on in the community. I mean, I think we all know the great work that you do, but it's always good to be reminded of the great work that you do. Big picture, housing is my number one priority. And I like the idea of that money going toward competitive grants because we do already have a structure for allocating dollars for housing, and I just think that that's a smart way to do it. The 2.4 alternate care, I believe strongly, and I'll continue to say this, that housing has to be a major component of that. You know, we provide services, and, and all of our providers provide services to the most vulnerable in our community. But what I hear time and time again is there is no next step. There's, you can, you can get someone some counseling. You can get any number of services. But at the end of the day, we so lack housing that people can then access after they've accessed all of these services that are provided throughout the community. So I will say that. The community ambassadors, I, I understand and can, can support it. I do have, I mean, I love that the money is leveraged. And, and I guess my, my only real concern would be that it's so concentrated in the downtown. But I also recognize and appreciate that our downtown is what brings so many visitors to Flagstaff. I enjoy being downtown, so I can support that. One big thing that I would like to see us carve some funding out to and how it gets allocated. But I really think that our victim services are deserving of $300,000. They tick all of the boxes that we're looking at this funding. They, the counseling, mental health assistance, the housing. They provide alternate response. They, they provide crisis response. Without them, our police would be responding. I know that our police go along with them in lots of cases, but, but our police would be, more time would be spent addressing the needs of victims without these organizations. And then we've heard about how they've had to rehab their facilities and PPE, all the, the COVID related everything. And we've, we've said that mental health, housing, and alternate response are priorities for the council. And so I would very much support money going to those. The early learning, I see that as a, I see it as a economic development tool in allowing parents to be able to be in the workforce and be more comfortable knowing that they have a place for their kids to go all day while they're working. So while I would normally have reservations about the city funding education, you know, pre-K-12 education, I do see this in a different light and would support it. So essentially, I'm, oh, the small business grants. I support them. I'd like to see the limit on employees, the number of employees be kept, because I would like them to, to definitely go to small businesses. And I could see taking $300,000 to make up for the victim services, or I'm open to looking at other areas as well. And tourism, I support that as well. I know it's the, you know, number one revenue generator. I know it's a very important part of our economy. And I would support taking that down to $150,000, $200,000, and that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a question for Rick to start off here. In category seven, which is other nonprofits or whatever, is that where we would put money for domestic violence, victim, victim services and that type of thing?
Yes, that could fit within that category, yes.
Okay, so that makes sense, and it, I would think we probably need to increase that if we can. Now let's go down to item 12. I guess I don't get the nexus or the connection between constructing the facility and, you know, it's STEM or STEAM type programs and the pandemic. And apparently, this money that we're getting, there has to be some connection to the pandemic. Is there a connection between item 12 and the pandemic? I don't see it.
Within the ARPA guidelines, it also wants us to invest in disproportionately impacted communities. And that would be those types of places where we're, we're helping those communities that, that may need a little more support. So it is within the guidelines, may not specifically COVID, but it is, it's, it's one of the categories.
Well, well, sorry if I could jump in there.
No, go ahead.
But the thing is, is the educational attainment was definitely impacted by COVID. I mean, my kids were in preschool for two months, and then they were out for over a year. So in a way, this is really helping to bridge that gap, provide the educational losses that many, many kids faced. So anyways, I just want to say I definitely see a direct connection.
Okay. Based on what we want to do with that facility, you might need $350,000. If not, I would suggest maybe reducing that a little bit. And then I guess the same question, is there a connection on item five, which is arts and science grants, and to COVID? And I guess the answer is the same. It's education is just likely disturbed from the mayor.
Well, arts and science were an impact community negatively due to COVID and their ability to be in our community and doing art programs, performances, what have you. So yes, they were negatively impacted.
Okay, and then I, I'm thinking, my gut reaction is that we could probably reduce the amount of number nine, which is tourism somewhat. Not get rid of it, but reduce it. Just kind of overall, I am supportive of the alternative care. That's items one and two. Housing is absolutely top of the list. And, you know, some support for small businesses and nonprofits. And the amount we have in for vaccination outreach, you know, I think that could be small. But on the other hand, $10,000 actually is pretty small. I mean, as a percentage of the, overall, that's a very small number. So that's kind of summarizes where my head's at right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimonie, and then Councilmember Salas.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for the discussion so far. I'm going to throw some numbers out for all of you to chew on a little bit that I think go in line with a lot of the values that you're, you're expressing, at least those that have spoken so far. So I'm going to run through my list, and Rick, buckle up. Here we go.
Never mind. Salas go first.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure.
And I'm, yes, thank you, because I, I have to catch my ride to cast a grant tonight to attend the Rural Transportation Advocacy Summit in the next couple of days. So, well, first of all, I appreciate Team Flagstaff for coming up with all of the suggestions. And my gratitude to everyone who's, who was here and is still here, physically or online, participating in this very important process. I am just concerned in what I've been hearing about lack of support to the tourism industry. Keep in mind, the tourism industry business is not only hotels, restaurants, but it also involves events and over 21 attractions in town, from Lowell Observatory to the laser tag place on West Route 66. It employs over 8,000 Flagstaff workforce. It funds parks, recreations, open space, natural area, beautification, public arts, and art sciences, the things we all love as a community and visitors too love these places. So I will speak strongly about keeping the $350,000 in a small business grant related to tourism. Again, I don't think there's a hotel in town that employs 300 people because all of them are looking for workforce. If you haven't seen the Flagstaff business news for this month, Flagstaff is, is number two in terms of food service nationwide in terms of excellence. But still, local restaurants struggle for workforce, from, from servers to chefs. So if I could just add a voice to the funding for, for tourism, please support tourism as well as separate small business grants, which will also include job training for $600,000 and local event support. And then I also want to add a voice to protecting our marginalized and underserved community members. Housing assistance for 1,500 plus another $500,000 at least in terms of a revolving fund for first time homeowners to low income families. Additional funds to Congress Shelter rounded up to 500,000. I support, of course, the nonprofit food support. Increase the funding to other nonprofits by at least 100. And especially add another item that addresses or supports nonprofit who directly provide services to domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking for at least 300,000. And then I support all the education and outreach. Keeping in mind that for three years, except for this year, previous council has allocated $75,000 for early childhood education, which was through launch. And that funding was not, I think, renewed this fiscal year, correct?
This is the last year.
This is the last year. Of course, I'm 100% in support of all, all the city services, item 14 to 17. And then let me go back to alternate care. 1.4 million is still vague for me. If we're looking at constructing or, or repurposing an existing facility, I think 1 million is a good start in leveraging existing city property or facility. And of course, work with strengthening community partnership and collaboration in achieving the alternate care response commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy.
So, Councilmember Salas, it sounds like you want to increase a lot of things. But so, and you're saying basically take that out of line item one, which is the facilities or services, alternative care. Is that correct?
Thank you for doing the math, Councilmember McCarthy. Yes, 1 million to, to alternate care, and then 1.4 million spread out to the, the items I mentioned.
All right. Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try to go quick, just so we can keep the conversation going. All right, Rick. So under housing, 3.5, I'd like to place a line item for an additional $400,000 specifically for low interest loan fund to nonprofits building alternative projects. I heard Councilmember Salas expressed a similar, but with 500. So we're close, and I appreciate your support. So I'm at 400,000 there, and I, and I list these numbers specifically because in my balance sheet, they do balance. So I'll just go through it really quick. Then item number six, under nonprofits, lower that food support to 300, so generating 50,000 additional. Item number seven, lower that to 100,000 from other nonprofits to 100,000. And then 7.5, a new line item for victim service, services funding, mental health and housing for 300,000 specifically for mental health counseling, housing, crisis response, rehab, and PPE, as we heard from the providers. Number eight, small businesses, councilmember Solis, I'm sorry I'm gonna do this, but I'm advocating that we lower that to 250, and I'm not just making up these numbers, I have done some research, I know. But I've heard that 250 is significant, and with a partnership that's gonna support a lot of small businesses, and I really appreciate Vice Mayor's comment about focusing on that smaller business component, and not just the larger ones. But considering what the funding support was in the past, 30,000 total, and now we're thinking about $500,000, I think that's significant in terms of supporting small businesses. I'd like to lower the tourism industry to $100,000, and the local event support to $75,000. Rick, let me know if you need me to slow down.
Yeah, please do.
Okay.
Please do.
I give you a second.
And what was the local events?
Local events down to 75, and then putting a new item under that for Discover Flagstaff marketing campaign regarding safety inward and outward communication, and other communications that the city might want for 50,000. I'm gonna pause for a second. And gosh, I think that's it, and believe it or not, those numbers all do balance, so you're welcome. So, Council, please do consider those recommendations, I think that's a very solid approach, and I think it basically meets the needs of our community, at least at a minimum level that we can all get behind. And with the $400,000 that we were both talking about, I know you mentioned 500, councilmember Solis, I'm open to that being done through a competitive grant process, like the rest of the funding. I'm also supportive of that being a line item specifically for what I mentioned. Whatever you all feel is appropriate, I'm supportive of, but I'd like to see that additional funding there, and like I said, it does balance, so councilmember Aslan, hopefully you can get behind that too, but yeah, that's, those are my comments, and thank you.
All right, councilmember McCarthy.
I have a process question, Rick. Is the goal tonight to come down to the, you know, figure each one of these out to the penny, or are you gonna go back and take these comments and try to come back with a proposal next week? Or what, what's the process?
I guess we were looking for a process to get a solid direction, so we can move forward and start doing the research on everything, and start getting the potential procurement started, having those conversations done. We're really starting, wanting to get moving with these funding. We don't want to keep coming back and adjusting dollars here and there, we're hoping to get that direction.
It'd be really cool if we can get like an Excel spreadsheet that's, you know, the Shimonie proposal, or the Aslan proposal, whatever. You know, it's kind of hard to envision all these changes, there's so many changes being suggested.
Mayor, can I jump in really, really quick?
Yeah, and then Vice Mayor.
Really quick, just off of that point, Rick, is there any way you could do that, what you did last time with that Excel, where you really like showed, because I do agree that would be helpful, but yeah, I don't know if that's possible.
I'm gonna be, I'm gonna try to siphon that down here a little bit, I hear three different new programs that I've listed out, I'm gonna go through the general things of what we've heard consensus of where we take out, and then we can see if the new, I'm working on my process, hopefully I can help wrap up some of the commentary, and we'll go from there, but Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say to councilmember Solis that that I in no way meant any kind of disrespect to tourism or not support for tourism, I'm just trying to find a way where we can, where we can support all of our priorities, and I of course have a very soft spot for nonprofits that can't really generate revenue, and so they're really looking to us and others to help them survive, so I very much support tourism, and I very much support the small business grants, I'm just trying to help this all balance out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, so, hold on, Rick and Clifton, they're the important people though.
Yeah, actually, I got a lot of chicken scratch on multiple papers, so it might be beneficial.
All right, are we?
We're back.
We are back. Okay, so, starting at the big picture here, in terms of consensus, we've heard a majority of council willing to support taking, in general, reducing the amounts in the small business support and increasing it for the nonprofits. We're also here, heard a couple folks discussing increasing the housing assistance. The alternate care, we've had only one individual wanting to change these numbers, so that is staying relatively same unless other, I mean, we can still have this conversation, I'm just giving a baseline for us to be bouncing off of. Alternate care intact, education and vaccination outreach, I do think we have a majority who does not want to do the vaccination outreach. We have, anyways, here, here's one of, we'll discuss that, I have actually an idea on that front. City services, we haven't even discussed, no change in that aspect either. Yeah, sorry, Clifton.
On topic, we think we can revisit that and maybe look toward trimming that down a bit more.
Through city services?
Yes.
Excellent, that's good to know if we have a little leeway there. But we trust our city staff for how much you do and knowledge about what's going on internally. I won't want to note, actually, with all the speakers tonight, I really appreciate folks saying thank you to not just us at the dais, but thanking city manager and city staff, because they're the ones who really get this stuff done. That was my side note, but, and then, with that, so, after those things, I've heard three different new proposals thus far, the main one being domestic violence and victim support totaling up to $300,000. And we heard from councilmember Shimonie, the Discover Flagstaff 50,000. And then, as I had mentioned earlier regarding the black molds issues, particularly with those who've been facing it here locally, I would like to be able to earmark that unless you've gotten more information on that, that's just.
Thanks for bringing that back up. Yeah, I was in contact with Stacy Brecker-Negs about this type of funding from the Cures Act, and it really doesn't fit the intention at this time, to remediate things that occurred prior to possibly COVID, or because of a different event that caused these kind of things. It's just, we're not reading into it that it's eligible.
Okay, well, if that's the case, I do appreciate you all doing research on that, I just, I want to figure out how we can utilize to help the folks that have been disaffected this summer in particular. But if that's not the case, then we really have the Discover Flagstaff 50K, and then the domestic violence add-on, I would like to see that as its own line item, not just put into other nonprofit support, and I'm getting nods of the heads from others.
There is a specific category for that, so we will.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Put it within there.
Through the categories. Okay, and then, the other option for increasing really was in the housing assistance portion. So we got basically our two add-ons would be the domestic violence and the housing assistance, and the Discover, if we're interested in that, we need to see if other councilmembers, let's hold that as the side fruit. We have also heard as a general consensus that we can reduce the funds from the small business support. We've heard various numbers, the one other area that we can reduce, which I'm glad councilmember Shimonie pointed out, would be the nonprofit food support from 350 to 300,000, since that was the request, and we're hearing lots of other requests needing that money elsewhere. Is that correct? Sorry, Mr. Tanner?
I would just caution that it was specific to a request, to a specific agency, because there are other food service agencies out there that may
Okay, yes.
Need some support, so I just want to balance that.
Thank you.
Our intention was not to decide today.
Yep, gotcha, I'm connecting. All right, so that has, that is an option for reducing slightly. Are we, are we good on the train of thought I'm going on here? Okay, so in the subtraction column, nonprofit food support potentially, small business grants, and tourism industry. In the plus column, we have domestic violence and housing assistance. Does that sound like, I want to make sure we're on the same page here, Council, from what everyone has heard.
A quick question, we already had 150,000 for other nonprofits, so part of that would go in, or from there.
It could, was there, what is the other nonprofit category, what else could be put into that?
In that category, we're also looking at, you know, just a broad spectrum of nonprofits in our community, you know, there are several that do great work, and have been impacted, and may need some support over this time, and we would be looking towards a united way to maybe adding support and helping those nonprofits, other than those that we've been talking about today.
Right, so that would be kind of like Boys and Girls Club, and that kind of?
If they're in that mix, I don't know if they're.
Yeah.
But yes, other nonprofits doing stuff in our community, yes.
Okay. All right, so any clarification from where I'm at before, I'm trying to create a baseline here with Council. Clifton?
We are hearing consensus about increased funding for housing, but there's been a number of comments to see some of that increase allocated specifically toward a revolving loan program, and I'm wondering if we can garner a little more clarity on that, if that's the majority of the council, we can make note of it.
Yes, we are in approval, we're in approval for doing the revolving fund. Is, are you wanting to do that as an, yeah, you mentioned the 400, but as an add-on or in part of the 1.5 million allocated?
Add-on, that was my thought, at least.
Okay, Vice Mayor, do you want to comment?
I agree, add-on, and and I think also, because the city already, housing staff already does this type of assistance, you know, they've already got the wherewithal to do those kinds of grants, and so I would, I would ask that that still be included in the amount that goes to housing, to then be given out competitively.
All right. So, thus far, I am seeing 400K more for housing assistance, 300K more for victim witness, subtract 50,000 for food, that's $650,000, and the one area that we were looking at for that was in small business support. Yeah, well, the whole category, small business support of
Mayor?
Grants, tourism, and local event support.
Do you still have the Discover Flag 50,000 also? I don't know if that was a consensus or not.
I was hoping we can, well, I'll hear everyone out, so yeah, let's talk specifically that 50K.
I would just ask, we are talking about cutting funding for something that really makes flagstaff unique, so I would ask we do not do the 50K, and we leave that in the small business grant money, I really am asking, please.
Thank you, that's where I'm at too, is I don't want to take it out of the grants for that purpose, but appreciate the, yeah, the thought on that one.
Mayor, I'm of the same mind, put me down for that too.
Thank you, councilmember, from coming from above. Okay, so, the other thing that I needed to talk about was the vaccination program. As you know, that was one, the COVID incentive, vaccination incentive program was something that I was really wanting to do. Before it was 100,000, now it's, that we had talked about in September, we've reduced that to $10,000. What I would like to consider us to do is to use that $10,000 for a vaccine incentive program for our city staff. It would also help us know how many folks are vaccinated within our own organization, we could do something with $10,000 where, this is what, for example, FMC is doing, where the top prize gets $5,000, then the next prize 2,500, and the next 1,000, 1,500, there's your $10,000. It would also be a lot easier to administer than opening it up to the rest of the community. Sterling, please stop me if there's any problems with what I'm suggesting too, so.
Mayor, Council, go ahead.
Wow, we get a thumbs up from Sterling, not a thumbs down, that's awesome.
The distinction you raised was a big one, that's all I'll say.
Thank you, yeah, councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm open to the idea, I'm curious what Council has to say on this topic, I'm also curious what leadership has to say, city manager, I'm looking at you, I'm not sure if you're the best one to respond to this from the city, but just what your thoughts are on the mayor's proposal, and you know, the pros and cons in leadership's minds in regards to doing a citywide initiative versus internally, but I'm open to it, I'm just curious to learn more from leadership.
Depending on any legal issues that our city attorney may raise or may not raise, I mean, we're here to implement these programs as Council sees fit. My only caution on this, and it's a very small caution, but one I'll state nevertheless, is all of these things, especially as we're talking about prizes, not the other things, frankly, just focusing on the prizes, needs to pass the front-page newspaper title test. Stated differently, I mean, it needs to, it needs to be acceptable publicly, and I would like a little more time, I think the prize idea is a good one, the numbers that I just heard referenced may raise eyebrows.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say is like an electric assist bicycle would be okay, but a car would not be okay? I'm just teasing.
A $5,000 prize to a public employee is going to raise eyebrows.
Oh, I see what you mean, okay. I'm supportive generally of the idea, but with city manager's thoughts in mind, but I'm curious to hear what other people think.
And Mayor, Council, if I may, when I made the comment, you can go ahead, it's to discuss, of course, if anything comes up that I think needs to have some legal advice, as the city managers indicated, you bet I'll jump in and indicate that, hey, that's something we should advise you on legally, so the discussion is fine, it's just those details from a legal perspective, if anything comes up, yes, we'll talk more about that.
Thank you, Sterling. Yep, McCarthy?
I think the biggest incentive to get vaccinated is that it could save your life. If that doesn't motivate a person, you know, a chance in 500 of getting a $5,000 check is ridiculous, I would, I would say we don't need it.
Councilmember Sweet?
Hey, I am going to ask again, I think that that $10,000 should go into the small business grant program, we are talking about cutting that significantly, and the small business and tourism industry has been hit hard, and I do not feel like the small business and tourism category should be taking the brunt of this, so that's where I would like to see that 10,000 go.
Thank you, councilmember Sweet. Other thoughts?
I had my hand raised this time.
Oh, okay, go right ahead, I can't see from the screen.
Trying not to startle you from above anymore. I appreciate the proposal, Mayor, there's some nuance there, I think it would be interesting to discuss further, but at the end of the day, I'm not supportive of using that $10,000 towards vaccine education or promotion. I think a much higher number might have helped us at that asymptote, as I've mentioned before, but I don't think $10,000 is going to dent things at all, and I have concerns about focusing in on the city. And I have concerns about focusing in on the city alone and the specifics of, again, those newspaper headlines. I think that's spot on, and we should, we should be cautioned about that, for sure. So I'm not in favor of that. If that 10 grand goes over to small business, or more into housing, I'm open to either one of those ideas, but I just don't think it's enough, it's too little, too late to make a difference for the final numbers. You know, we're trying to get to herd immunity here at the end of the day, and I don't think this is going to push us across the finish line.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. All right, with that, that we can free up 10 grand for other purposes. Councilmember Shimoney?
I just wanted to echo Councilmember Sweet's comments. I wouldn't mind that, I mean, it's, it's a small amount of money, although 10,000 is what the city put aside last time, so it's not that small. It does help. And I'm sure that, you know, the more we can put towards small businesses, the better. I know that sounds contradictory to what I'm proposing, which is really slashing that budget significantly, but, yeah, I, I do see value if, if we did put 10,000 somewhere to put it back into the small business category.
Vice Mayor?
Also, we might consider taking some from alternate care to put back into small business and tourism, or one of the other areas. Because again, the, the alternate care really is going to, it's going to depend on our service providers in the community, including housing.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I am not interested in reducing the alternate care amount whatsoever. I think we, it is also something that if we find that it's more than we need, well, how it's phrased in here allows us to use that potentially for additional services for these same individuals. It's just a matter of it's connected to the alternate response that we have already funded, we've already contracted out with. So it helps us with that step. Whether that goes wider afterward, well, these plans are still being made, so I would rather keep that amount as it is now. That's where I'm at. And I hear, I see nods from Councilmember Shimoney.
At least from me, you do. I think we're close to having consensus...
Same here.
I think we're, we're close to having consensus on this, on this topic for the night and being able to wrap this up, I believe. And so, Mayor, just wanted to bring us back to the two points that you were talking about, which is the, the line item for victim services, and then also the line item for the housing revolving fund. And then I guess the question is, are we all on the same page in regards to the proposal that I put out there in regards to that, that cut in funding from the small business and tourism sector? I think the answer is yes, but that's, that's the question I think on the table.
Yeah, in general, yes, but I'm concerned because right now we're at $640,000 we would have to cut from 1.075. So we would be slashing it to pieces with the housing assistance, the additional housing assistance and the victim witness. Yeah?
Mayor and Council, we were talking about the city services and how we can maybe help and reduce that. We could see that we can squeeze out another 200,000 from that and still deliver the services we need. So we are definitely willing to up that into the, a cut category, which puts us at 450, if you just shift the 10,000 to small business for vaccines. But 450 is the number I'm, I'm currently at, for change. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, 440 if we do the, take away the vaccination.
Yeah, if you take the 10 out, we're at 440, as far as overspend. Adding the, the 700, which is victim service domestic violence and revolving loan for 700, minus 50 for food, minus 200 for city service, and minus 100, 10,000 for vaccines, gets us to that 440 that we're at, to fill the gap.
Okay. And now we are looking at 440, and the area that we were looking in is in the small business support? Or we reduce the amount that is going, that we are adding to housing assistance or to the victim witness domestic violence issues?
I would be okay with looking at the alternate care as a component of making up that difference.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember McCarthy?
Mr. Clifton, the 2.4 for alternate care facility, I mean, is that a number that's kind of based on some analysis, or just kind of picked out of the air? Can you talk to that number?
I can, and while I am speaking, I would invite Shannon Anderson to also tag team with me on that, because she's a little bit closer to it than, than I am. My comments are as follows. Pursuant to the town hall meeting of a couple of weeks ago, we are attending, I know Council may attend and not participate, staff will attend and participate in a facilitated day long or significant discussion with our service providers about this program and how it might weave into programs already in place with, with our service providers, taking advantage of, of some new things we've learned about in recent times with respect to acquired facilities, hotel facilities potentially. There is a myriad of talking points there to, to be explored. The reason I mention that is not at all to diminish the, the need or the cost of alternate response or alternate care. I think we're using those synonymous, synonymously, but the, rather to possibly leverage those funds or integrate those funds into other programs. And while we've heard over and over about the integration of housing into this program, and I don't want to debate that at all, but the, I, I think implicit in, in all of that, too, is, is some of these funds could be going, finding their way toward housing solutions, if you will. In other words, I don't see a complete separation in these programs. The alternate response program and, and, you know, getting people into housing, they, they seem to go hand in hand. So I, I do think there is that component of the alternate response program that needs to be kept in mind, is I don't think it's entirely segregated from the topic of housing. And I'm not at all suggesting we revisit the, the amount going into housing, I'm just saying this could indeed be supplemental to that. Shannon, can you please speak to the, how we derived the 2.4 million into the alternate care program?
So the 2.4 was a portion of the need. We actually presented to Council back in April based on the proposals we received, and those ranged from 300,000 to 4.6 million dollars. And that was for the behavioral health personnel and the management of the center itself. And then when you look at the cost of the facility, we estimate we would need a facility that's between 26,000 and 60,000 square feet, based on other models that we've seen. To lease space, we estimated be $5.39 per square foot, amounting to 248,000 to 431,000 for a lease. And then to purchase would be 262 dollars per square foot, and that could be between 12 million and 21 million. Again, those low numbers to the high numbers is based on 26,000 square feet to 60,000 square feet. So, so that 2.4 million dollars is really just a portion of the money that we would need in order to get a care center like this off the ground. Keeping in mind, these are one-time dollars, and so we would also be looking for additional funding sources.
Vice Mayor?
I don't, I don't want to, we're not here to, to debate the alternate response, but I really think that we can be looking at this project without looking at the city funding a facility. I just think with, we heard loud and clear at the town hall that the space exists, and even some of the services that we're talking about exist. So I just put that out there, that I, I don't necessarily think that we're looking at the city rehabilitating a building, building a building, buying a building, renting a building. I just think that the space already exists.
Councilmember Shimoney, I have something to respond to that.
Oh, I was just gonna, kind of just help us move along with the conversation tonight. So, Rick, if I'm not mistaken, we're looking for a total of 700,000 because of the 400,000 and the additional 300 are the two main line items. And if that's the case, then I'm thinking that, we, we talked about the 50,000 from line item six for the, the food support. I'm thinking for the small businesses, we bring that down to 350 rather than 250, so that basically frees up an additional 250,000. We bring down the tourism budget from 350 to 150, bring up an additional 200,000. And that with the 200,000 from the city, if I'm not mistaken, adds up to what we're looking for. So the question is, is there support for that? Because if there is, we're done. And then the 10,000 for the vaccine incentives, we can just throw at the small business line item as well, as a small little cherry on top, but that adds up, and we can call it a night.
Yeah, we were at, you're gonna have to repeat that again, because I was doing my own numbers equivalently.
Yeah, really quick. So line item six, oh, Rick, do you want to?
Does Rick have a list of where we're at? And if you do, I'd like to write it down on all of these.
Sure, sure. You got it.
You want me to do it, or you got it?
Either way.
After you.
Well, can you do, can you do it line by line?
Sure.
Yeah. So if we go up, no change to alternate care. We're looking at 400,000 to housing assistance, dedicated to revolving loan or so forth, so that's a 400. We are looking at adding a 7.1 or such to add 300,000 for victim services, domestic violence-related nonprofits. Then we are looking at reducing nonprofits' food support by 50,000. Line six, thank you. We are looking to reduce the vaccine, vaccine program by 10, and maybe shift into small business. And then under city services, we're going to tighten these numbers up. Nothing specific right now, but reducing 200,000 from city services. Then, as recommended by Councilmember Shimoney, taking line eight for small businesses to 350,000, saving 250. And taking line nine down to 150,000 for 200,000 to balance the equation. What's that? And 200, yeah, I, I went down and did the 200 and came back.
All right, that means that we would be down to 350,000 for small business grants and 150,000 for tourism industry. So we're down to a half a million dollars for a business. Well, and then the local event support of 125. Councilmember Sweet doesn't like this.
Does that include the 10,000 from the vaccine?
We would add back 10,000 into the small business.
Small business grants, so it'd be 360K for small business grants.
Okay. I just want to make one more comment, that I, I want to echo what Councilmember Daggett said about the alternate care, that we have a partner in this room right now who has maybe voiced that there's help, or we, you know, there's different ways we can look at this. And I don't want to ignore that, and I just feel like there is some money in that, that line item that can be used elsewhere. Thank you.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Well, first of all, I have the highest respect for Flagstaff Shelter Services. I think everyone here knows that. However, there are certain groups of people that will not go there. And it may be that that's for good reason. It may be that it's not a good reason. But the reality is, there's a large group of people that will not go there. So we need to service those people, too. And without getting into a debate about why they don't want to go there, it doesn't matter. They don't want to go there. They won't go there. And those people need to be serviced, too. That's why we need Flagstaff Shelter Services and this new facility. It's sort of like, I think I said one time before, sometimes we go to McDonald's, sometimes we go to Wildflower Bread Company. We need more than one. We need some choices in the community. And this is true in this case as well. And that's with absolutely no disrespect for Flagstaff Shelter Services. I very strongly support them.
I just want to chime in, too, about this, is that we keep thinking that the alternate care is only serving the homeless, whereas this is an alternate response for all mental health crises in our city. That hits every strata of the socioeconomic spectrum. And we're trying to find a place where we can stabilize them, whether they're intoxicated, whether they're having a mental health crisis in the immediate, and then refer them to the services that they need in the community. This is all integral with all of, all of the services provided. But we need a place where we can provide basically a clearinghouse, a triage for what ails them, and getting them the, the services they need. That's going to be a partnership with all of our nonprofit organizations, and is going to be, it's just, we, we need that facility, and we need to have enough funds to make it a reality, because if, I don't want to start a new program. We've already done so great, Council, with the alternate response team. I'm so excited. We filled that contract last week. We, I want to make sure we're creating something extremely successful as we move on this path. And this, I think, supports all of what we're, what we're talking about, from the domestic violence survivors to mental health crises, somebody having a schizophrenic attack who has a roof over their head and a hot meal available to them. So I'm just getting at, this, this is really important. I think it's a great thing to basically provide a transition in between our alternate response, crisis response team, and then the rest of the services in the community. That's the niche that we're, we're looking to help with. So, thank you, Vice Mayor.
And I don't think that we're very far apart in what, in what we're saying. And just to clarify, we're not talking about Flagstaff, the, the current shelter being a place where people are taken. So that wasn't even suggested or, or on the table. What I am saying is that we can look at other facilities being available to help us meet this need. And so that's, that's really all that I want to get across, is that, is that we're talking about the same thing. I'm just saying that I believe much of what we're looking to create already exists, and I think that this process that, that all of the agencies are going to go through, I think it will come out of that, and we'll see it more clearly.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimoney?
So I think we're so close, right, Rick?
Yeah.
We're right there.
With your proposal, we're on, but there's still some...
Right, so I guess my question to Councilmember Sweet, you know, are you comfortable with 350 for small businesses in that grant funding, and then 100? 360, thank you. And then 150 for tourism? If not, what is it that you would be comfortable with? If yes, thank you, and we can move forward. What are your thoughts?
You're putting me in a tough position. My heart says I am not comfortable with that. I don't think we're far off where I would be comfortable, like 400 would be... I don't think we're far off where I would be comfortable, like 400 would be something I can digest better. I just and I'm sorry, I have a personal attachment to this, you know, it is real. But I'm willing to keep keep the conversation going. We don't want to be here all night. Is there somewhere, like maybe the local event support? I don't know what that, you know, are those event planners that we're going to try and help? Can the city maybe waive some fees and just have that waived and some of that money come?
With all due respect, I have a point of order.
Thank you.
Councilmember Aslan?
I just believe we have sufficient direction to proceed already.
Well, we're, I guess, the we're just discussing the specific dollar amounts, though. And we're I want to provide Councilmember Sweet some opportunity for us to build consensus around this. Even if we had a majority, this is really important for us to be inclusive with.
Fair enough. I I'll just say, I don't think we should touch any of that alternate response money. Whether it goes to facilities or services, we're going to need every penny of it. So I'm sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Thank you, Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I guess to finish my sentence, you know, I love my local events, but I'm wondering if maybe we can take a few dollars from there and push it over to small business, because local event planners are small businesses.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. How about this? We do, we take the small business grants down to 400,000, 150,000 for tourism, and 85,000 for the local events. That pencils out.
Thank you.
85,000? Oh, I we got some sad thumbs up, but we do have a good consensus here. So, thank you, council. Councilmember Aslan, are you good with that proposal?
I am, and I appreciate the back and forth.
All right. Go, team.
Again, as I said, to start off with, I I knew that we had it within us to arrive at a solution of group wisdom. And I don't think any of us are entirely getting what we want tonight. But we all knew that going in. And this does the most amount of good for the most people who are in the most need. And that includes everybody we've been talking about, including small businesses.
I think we should all focus that we can. We're actually helping a lot of people through this process. I know it's hard to do these priorities and everything else, but we get to help a lot of people through this, and I'm thankful that we have the opportunity to do so. So with that, is anything else that you need from us, Mr. Tatter?
No, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for the direction.
Other than maybe some Tylenol.
Our team has a big task to make sure we can fill those requests that you have. So we'll go at it.
Yikes. Turn off her mic. All right. Well, then, we can start.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing? I just want to thank our city management, again, for in real time crunching some numbers and finding some extra money that they can take out of their request to better serve these other needs that we're trying to figure out. I just really want to take a moment and thank you, guys, for doing that in real time in service of this situation.
Thank you, Councilmember. That brings us down to agenda item number 10, public participation. I'm getting shaking of heads, so we're good on that. Down to information items, two from mayor, council, and city manager. Councilmember Aslan, you got anything tonight?
I do. I have just two brief things. First of all, I wanted to give kudos to STACY and IT, the new interface we have, which takes much greater advantage of the full-screen capability when looking at folks who are chiming in from online. It's fantastic. Thank you for looking into that and figuring out how to do it. I think it's really helpful to be able to see people with more detail. And that leads to my second comment. I don't know how I don't know if this is a fair or just something we can look into. I think it would be nice if public speakers at the DAIS had the option to take off their mask during their three minutes of of comment. Not saying they have to, but leave it up to them. I would appreciate being able to see people's full faces and be able to hear them without any cloth in the way. And this may be something that needs further discussion. It's, you know, I'm just one guy with an idea, but I think that would be kind of nice if we could do that moving forward. And it's not just because I like to admire great beards, but because I get a lot more out of the experience of hearing from people when I can see the fullness of the emotion they're bringing with them to public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shumoni?
Sure, I'm ready. As ready as I will be. First of all, I just wanted to thank the council, leadership, staff, the public, all the service agencies that serve our community. As you can tell, we this was a difficult conversation, but I think we did a good job, and I feel really good about it. And so kudos to us and cheers to Team Flag and all of us in the city and in the region. This is a real, again, a blessing to have these types of funding to be able to allocate, even though these are such hard times for all of us. Just a couple of things. The the ATMP Public Review is currently underway, the Active Transportation Master Plan. And they had their first public hall town meeting on on social media, I believe it was, streamed. And Jenny Neiman and Martin Ince with the city helped co-host that discussion, and they did a great job. It was really good discussion. It's archived on the city online. And the next ATMP Active Transportation Master Plan public event is a Saturday at 10:00 a.m. till noon at Busch Master Park. Check it out. It'll be a good discussion and a great way to get caught up on what's going on. This Friday, I am doing a fire ride-along. This it was initially scheduled for 24 hours, and I talked it down to 12 hours, but still a 12-hour ride-along with our fire department. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Seth Gregor at the Fire Department for helping me coordinate that, and Chief Gaylord. Looking forward to that and being able to bring those insights back with me to the DAIS in the future. Other than that, let me see really quick. I thought I had one other thing to share, but I'll just go ahead and skip to my last item, which is that next Tuesday, I will be traveling to Eugene for a friend's birthday party. But I will also be visiting sites and talking to leadership and and learning about some of the things that are actually on the agenda as my fair items next Tuesday, which the funny thing is I might not be here to advocate for them, because I might be on a plane, depending on how long our meeting goes. But I look forward to going to Eugene and learning firsthand how those operations are working or not working, and bringing those insights back to share with all of you. So, yeah, I'm really looking forward to that. But, um, yeah, great, great, great meeting tonight. Thank you all who came out and advocated. Rick, thank you for your service and work. Really appreciate it. And and really humbled and appreciative of this opportunity to serve as an elected official for the City of Flagstaff. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to thank my fellow council members and mayor for this discussion. It it can it's challenging when there's disagreement, even even slight. And I know that we all care equally for the vitality of our city and for the people who live here. And I know that we all came to this discussion with with open minds and with the city's best interest at heart. And I appreciate that. The housing plan, the 10-year housing plan, is open for public comment. And the next community outreach meeting is October 27. And I really hope that people will dig into this plan and give us some meaningful feedback. And a plug for our local animal shelter, High Country Humane, is so full. And if anyone has room to foster kittens or puppies or adult dogs, please call the shelter. And I know that they're not the only ones that are full. All the animal rescue groups are are struggling to find foster homes. So get some foster animals.
I already have four. Well, actually, six. I got two dogs, too. Okay, so a couple things here. First off, I wanted to thank Rose Tohe and Steve Darden for yesterday's Indigenous Peoples' Day. It was such a great series of presentation and events, and it was really amazing going up on MacMillan Mesa that more early morning, hearing the prayer and seeing all the deer going by, the woodpeckers flying overhead. It was just it was a good omen for things to come. That being said, the one thing I wanted to, yeah, inform you all on is that we've had a few discussions now regarding smart city initiatives. And Cliff city manager Clifton, myself, and CJ Perry, our IT director, met with the Vice President of Smart Cities with the ACC. And we were discussing putting forth or developing a roadmap for the City of Flagstaff that befits who we are and where we want to move. Because we I feel like we can't just get up to the point with our broadband systems, but what are we going to do with it? What are the next steps? What are the big ideas that we can work on and develop, potentially partner with NAU, potentially partner with county or anyone else, to be able to have some real reasonable, practical benchmarks and a roadmap to developing as a smart city? So anyways, those conversations went very well, and I'm looking forward to having a greater discussion about this. And city manager here in the next month or two might be putting together a work session to try to really flesh it out and see what the possibilities are and what we all might want to pursue in terms of creating that kind of plan. Anyways, those are the main things I wanted to talk about. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say I think we had a good meeting tonight. It was productive. The other thing I'd like to ask is, you know, I I would like to see some updates on where we are on helping the flood victims. I'm not talking about their personal houses. I know the restrictions on that, but, you know, what the city can do. Is the analysis going on of what's going to be done next? Do we have the funding to do that? You know, kind of where we are on that. I would like to see that. I think, kind of like COVID, we need to update on that pretty frequently, because if we lived on half a soupice street, we'd be very motivated. I don't, obviously, but I think that would be very useful to the community. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
First, I just want to say thank you to everyone. It was a great meeting. And thank you for listening to me. And I want to talk a little bit more about tourism. The tourism industry is looking for employees, and there is a job fair Wednesday, October 13, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Little America. And I did have a wonderful opportunity to go to Tinkertopia. And if you have not been there yet, I am telling you, you must go. It is amazing. And I want to say congratulations to Mountain Line, celebrating 20 years. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Sweet. Oh, Councilmember McCarthy.
Yeah, I just want to say I toured Tinkertopia also, and it is an amazing facility.
Yep. Councilmember Salas?
Sterling's gonna get you. Councilmember Salas? All right, she may be having issues on that front, technical. I did want to bring up to I know the idea had been floated at a prior council meeting for, you know, regular updates regarding the Buseam fire postflooding. And I think it would be a good idea to have that, but to do it for all of our efforts at flood mitigations, wildfire mitigations, so we know what's also going on around the city. We could get an update, for example, for hopefully a four-fry gets back going again, or, you know, where are we at with FWPP? Having more general discussion and a regular agenda item where we really do discuss wildfire and post wildfire flooding in general. Oh, city manager, you're?
Thank you, Mayor, for raising that. We had an excellent meeting with the Forest Service last week, and members of our wildfire crew and other staff members. It was very good. And out of that, we did decide it was time to get in front of council and provide an update. So that it has not yet been set, but it is definitely in the queue. And it does pertain to the four-fry project and things that are now happening. And there's a lot of things happening, frankly. The so rather than try to summarize it, you can expect a work session in the in the weeks ahead.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, with that, get my boomstick.